I don't know, we're good, we're here.
We're here, yes. Good evening, I'm gonna call the Board of Selectmen's meeting from Monday, March 20th, 2023 to order. It's 5:45. We will be going into executive session, and quick note, we will return to open session no later than 6:00 P.M. Can I get a motion to go into executive session?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I move that we go into execu-- we vote to go into executive session pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss with respect to collective bargaining for all town unions, and the chair has determined that we need some quiet in the room.
Noreen.
The chair has determined that open session would have a detrimental effect on the town's bargaining position, police patrol, and superior police unions.
Second.
Moved and seconded to go into executive session. Roll call vote, Larry?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And I am an aye. Thank you.
It's up last.
Good evening. Good evening, I'm gonna call the Board of Selectmen's meeting from March 20th, 2023, back to order. We started tonight's meeting in executive session where we discussed with respect to collective bargaining for all town unions, and the chair has determined that an open session would have a detrimental effect on the town's bargaining position, police patrol, and superior police unions. We did make a decision, it's ongoing negotiation, so we will not be announcing that tonight. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Start with public comment announcement, just to let everyone know that if you're here for a petition article tonight, we're not talking about petition articles until next week. Tonight is, we will discuss CPC articles and other articles, but not petition articles tonight. Anyone else for public comment and announcement?
Yeah, good evening, thank you. Patrick Otten, East Harwich. When is town meeting scheduled? May, June, no.
May 1.
May 1, 7 o'clock?
May 1 at 7 o'clock.
At Community Center.
That's correct.
Okay, okay. And one more question. When I was at the real estate and open space meeting during open comments, you made a comment that there were many inaccuracies in the citizens' petitions concerning fertilizers. Can you delineate those for me so I can have an understanding of what you're talking about?
I may get in touch with you if I get time this week. I will not be doing that tonight. I would, I would ask that you contact the water superintendent.
The water superintendent?
Yeah, and Patrick, it really goes back to the, the long debate we had in this room related to the same thing that the Board of Selectmen voted not to pursue, and the water commissioner at that time outlined several facts, and those facts are the same facts I'm talking about.
Yeah, I just need to know what they are so I can understand the issue.
Okay.
May I hand you an additional information on the citizens' petition?
You can hand it to the town administrator. Thank you. Anyone else for public comment and announcement?
Thank you, Carolyn Carey, the Community Center Director. I just wanted to let the public and certainly yourselves know that on Saturday, this Saturday, March 25th, due to circumstances beyond our control, the Community Center will be closing at 2:00 P.M. It has been posted, and we have let all of our participants know, but that includes the weight room and the gym, so 2:00 P.M. this Saturday.
Thank you.
Just quickly, the DIY egg hunt kits are ready to be signed up for, so you can certainly call, there are flyers on our website throughout the building, they've gone home to the schools, so those are ready. We do about 300 of these, so put your order in and we'll get you a DIY kit to go egg hunting with your kids. We're doing a bunny photo op on April 7th, 4:30. Come on in, we'll have your picture taken with the bunny. If it's nice, we'll be outside, and in the event of rain, we'll be inside. The air is the jelly bean contest from April 1st through April 20th for children and adults. There are prizes to be given out, and we can't tell you how many. I will give you a hint, there's more than one and less than 2,000. So helpful. The magic show with Crazy Dave is scheduled for April 18th, and more to follow. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment and announcement? Mary?
Just the committee vacancies that we have, agriculture, capital outlet, community, community center facilities, conservation, council on aging, accessibility rights, cultural council, energy and climate action, housing committee, historic, planning, real estate and open space, voter information, youth services, and the zoning board of appeal, and the vacancies, our forms are available on our website.
Thank you, Mary.
Michael?
Go ahead, Larry.
On the accessibility rights committee, one of our members passed away a couple, a week and a half or two weeks ago, Steve Duffy. So we, he was a great addition to that, he actually was active in other town committees as well, but that means we do have a vacancy, it doesn't show up there, but certainly express our great sympathy for that and thankful all he added to the town of Harwich.
Thank you, Larry. Set down?
Yep.
Consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, I move that we vote to approve the following consent agenda items. First, to approve a Board of Selectmen meeting minutes from March 6, 2023. Second, to accept a gift from team bonding of three little libraries for the Community Center. Third, to vote to approve the buyback of vacation time for the fire chief per the employment agreement, section 7. Fourth, the approve Jennifer Harrington Harwich Animal Control Officer as the Inspector of Animals. And fifth, vote to approve the Assistant Town Administrator's recommendation to grant permission by S.T.R. Electric Company, D.B.A. Eversource Energy, for the purpose of installing a, what is that, 90-foot?
Yes.
Plus or minus 2 to 4 inches conduit which is necessary to provide service at Turtle Run, Orleans Road.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 5-0. All right, on to the joint meeting, the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Waste Water, Wastewater Commissioners. Good evening.
Good evening.
Dan, Noreen, I'm not sure who vice chair is, but do you wanna call your meeting to order?
Yeah, I'll call the Board of Water, Wastewater Commissioners to order a discussion of the upcoming annual budget.
Thank you. You are sharing a mic tonight, so slide it back and forth as, as you're talking.
We've never had trouble being heard.
You have never. Thank you. So we'll start off with the fiscal year 2024 Water and Wastewater Department operating budgets. We have seen this, so if you wanted, Dan, if you're gonna go through this, if you just touch on the highlights, and then we'll get into questions or comments from the board.
Yeah, so I guess if I can just highlight changes from the March 4th, I believe, was the budget presentation. With respect to the water budget, if I recall correctly, really the only change was the reduction in the enhancement of services that we were carrying previously. Beyond that, there was one reduction in the administrative fees with respect to long-term debt. That number was reduced, I think, from somewhere in the neighborhood of 24,000 down to the 1,963 that's in the packet. Overall budget numbers, I believe, do match up with what was in the packet for the Selectmen's evening, so I think we are all in line.
Dan, just for the public, will you give us what your total budget is and what your percent increase is per category? So start with water, and that's really for the public?
Yeah, so water for FY '24, we have an anticipated salary and wage line item for 1.39 million. It's an increase of 7.06 over FY '23. For expense line item, we totaled $2,343,359, which is a 5.76 increase over last year.
Any questions from the board on that part? Larry?
Thank you, Michael. Dan, thanks for that, very detailed report, thank you for that as well. Can you just give some details on the interfund transfer, what, what makes that up?
Yeah, sure. So the interfund transfer, or OFUS, or other funding uses and sources, is a bulk category that includes the health benefits for the 15 employees within the water department, as well as charge backs from the general fund for things like processing payments with the treasure collector, the town administrator's time, things like that. So that's what comprised that 818, 913 figure.
Okay, thank you.
Don?
No, it's very complete, it's a really good-looking report.
Mary?
No, I don't have any questions.
Any questions or comments, Joe?
Just the appreciation that the numbers matched, that was more on me than Dan, so I'm great to, happy to hear that.
Anyone in the public on this budget? Okay, Dan, you wanna continue?
Yeah, moving on to the wastewater budget, this one's been talked about a little bit more since the March 4th hearing, but what's included in the packet for tonight, I believe, is the final, is the final number. And with that, there's additions to the OFUS or indirects line item. When we first presented this, it was in the $31,000, $32,000 range, that's been increased to the $62,148 in the packet tonight, which reflects the additional fringe benefits that would be carried for the Assistant Wastewater Superintendent position that we're to be discussing. Beyond that, there's been some pretty significant changes and also talked about with respect to the debt for wastewater, so those figures have been updated. The total for our expense category, including debt, is now 1.756 million, down from 2.24 million last year, or a 21.73% reduction. The salary and wage line item jumping back up. Last year, we had a budget of $82,203, this year is 175,178, reflecting the additional Assistant Wastewater Superintendent position.
Thank you. Questions, Larry?
No, I have none.
Don?
Not a question so much as a comment, I mean, that was predictable enough because the sewer's starting to come online and you have, have to manage them.
Mary?
Just one question, on the bottom line, if I'm reading this right, it shows total revenue and total expenses, and it looks like there's almost a million, 963,000 that we're gonna spend that we don't have, do we know where we're getting that? Am I reading that correctly?
So the delta that you're seeing, the 963, is the, is actually the 1.99 minus the, sorry, that's an internal calculation that we have at the end, I believe it's the, yeah, the 1.99 minus the 15,000 in revenue from sewer operating budget, minus the 1.015 million, which is a transfer in, from the general fund. So the 9963 is gonna be made up partially from the transfer of debt from last year into this year, that we talked about, that big change in debt figures.
Okay.
Last year, you weren't here on March 4th, I know you were online, Mary, but it's never the same. Last year, the debt was overbudgeted, it wasn't a mistake, the, the excess came out of timing, you know, one project fell into another year, and also it came out of the fact that Carol Coppola had booked the debt amount before the state had figured out different amounts of forgiveness and other things they were gonna give us. So we wound up with an excess on this year's debt of $857,000 and change, so that will go towards that 963 along with the subsidy, if that makes it clear.
Thank you.
Thank you. Joe, any comments?
No, just that when you'll see the funding tables, we'll make reference to the transfer from last year's article as part of that, so it does all balance.
Great, thank you. Anyone in the public on the wastewater budget? Welcome, Chairman Carrera.
Apologize, overshot.
No, that's, that's okay. So we wanna make motions, does someone on the board wanna make a motion to support the water budget and the wastewater budget, since we're going to move through the warrant and support tonight?
I move that we vote to support the wastewater and the water budgets as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Joe, is that enough for you?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 4-0. I think earlier, Joe, I said 5-0 on the consent agenda, but I'm sure you caught what I was doing.
I gotcha.
Joe agreed too.
Julie's voting from afar. 4-0. Just a comment, it's been recommended by FinCom and some members of the public anyway that we have a table or that we have an article for new hires, because this is in your article four. I believe where we've landed is we're going to do a chart showing new positions, we're not doing, we voted not to do separate, separate articles, which is historically, other than a long time ago, we have not done it that way. So you might wanna consider putting your new position in your description, so as your, as your motion gets read, it's in there.
Got it.
So I think that, that takes care of A and C, add to staff, and so now we'll go into 2023 Annual Town Meeting Warrant Articles.
You said that took, took care of A and C, but, I mean, we came prepared to defend C.
I don't think you need to.
Okay, well, if you don't have to say it, don't say it.
Based, based on the comment from Don and no other comments from the board, I would say it's supported by this board.
Okay, thank you very much.
If you need, you have any more comments, I'm in complete agreement with Don, this is a position we've envisioned for some time. It's more than one person positioned, even though you do a good, good job, it's a...
Buried.
So just to mark it, that's our first full-time wastewater in play in the town.
And as far as we're concerned, it needs to happen. We don't wanna burn him out at this point.
We don't wanna burn him out later.
At this point.
We're waiting, huh?
Mary, any, any comments on the position?
No, just that I can't imagine that we could go forward with a wastewater project like this and not have a full-time.
Thank you.
Absolutely no question.
Thank you. Does that work for you, Noreen?
Yes, thank you. It's only like 13 years in the works.
Glad you came, Gary.
2023 Annual Town Meeting Warrant Articles, Dan?
All right, so included in the packet was a memo highlighting just high-level the articles we have, as well as some proposed language relative to the bylaw changes. Just running through from the top, we have our FY '24 New Source Exploration Phase 2, which is a continuation of the work we're doing in North Harwich to identify a new source for the water system. Proposed to be funded $300,000 out of retained earnings and a reappropriation of 2022 Annual Town Meeting Article 21, in the amount of $300,000 for a total cost of $600,000. Just to expand on that a little bit.
Dan, if I could, this is also in the capital plan, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
The project, yes.
Correct.
The reappropriation of last year's Article 21, if you recall, we tried to get an article in there for design for a project that would meet the criteria of the federal infrastructure bill. Since that time, the, the directive has become much more clear from DEP as to their priorities, which are PFAS mitigation and lead service line replacement. Well, it's fortunate that we don't have those issues here in town, it also makes it difficult for us to put forward an eligible project. So with that, I'm recommending we reappropriate the money for that purpose towards our new well source exploration project. Moving forward...
Can we stop right there? Joe, questions, comments?
So first, the comment, Dan had been working with council, council sent us drafts late this afternoon, so what Dan, I would say, has in your packet is a facsimile, close to the intent of what they're looking to do, but we have actual language that came in from council that was vetted and in the format that council's used to. My question would be, is council aware of the transfer element of the article?
I believe so, but I will double-check my outbox and confirm.
So the only reason I ask that is we will probably have, well, no, I'm sorry, we do have a standalone article for water retained earnings, so we would add language to that article to accomplish the transfer. So we'll have more than just what's in the article presently in your draft warrant.
Thank you. Larry?
No question.
Don?
I'm good.
Mary?
Also.
Joe, is there any reason we can't vote to support this now or not support?
I would, I would recommend it, the, well, if I could very quickly, I wanna just make sure we have in your warrant, that should have already been added...
It's on page 7, Joe.
Thank you very much. So as Noreen knows, it's on page 7, thank you, Noreen. So you can see the capital items, and then we have capital, they plan items funded for water retained earnings, and so we'll probably change the title to reflect the two different funding sources, but you've already placed it, so it's already on your docket for recommendations.
Okay, Don?
We can do that absent language.
It's the will of the board.
We're gonna vote to support something we haven't read?
Chair asked me my opinion, I gave my opinion.
Mary?
I view it somewhat differently, I think we could vote for it with final language coming from legal counsel.
Yeah, the intent of it's not gonna change, it's the wording.
And that wouldn't get it past us.
And the funding sources have been identified, so I'm comfortable with it. Mary?
Just a question, is that its whole own article, or it looked like you were pointing to the capital article?
So there's, there's three capital articles that are based on funding mechanism.
Yeah.
Anything for water retained earnings is its own.
Okay.
Because it was focused on the funding rather than just the content.
So this would be to support the standalone article?
For the, for the water department, correct.
Don?
Not to make everything more complicated, but it's my understanding that when you approve the capital plan, it still needs an appropriation to spend money on the things that you're approving in the plan.
Joe?
I took that as a comment.
Well, it's kind of like a comment with a question mark at the end of it, it's a, you vote to approve a capital plan, which allows you to structure the town meeting, and then subsequently you appropriate money against what you've put forward in the capital plan, it's not, you just don't vote for the capital plan, everything's fully funded.
Is that what this is doing?
Yes, yeah. We, we have an article that would be to adopt the plan.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying.
And then we have several appropriating articles.
So you'd need something subsequent, and that's what this is.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, I see where you're going, yes. Noreen?
Just a suggestion to the town administrator, the total funding is coming from retained earnings, it's just that some of it's from this year's retained earnings, and some of it's from last year's retained earnings, so personally, I don't think you have to change the language, but...
Okay, and it might be a language in the motion then, to that point. Yep, thank you.
So do we need a motion?
We do.
If so, I move we, we approve the wastewater article.
Water.
It's a water article.
Water article, excuse me, I got wastewater in my mind. Water article on the new source exploration phase 2, with final language set by legal counsel.
Second. Moved and seconded. Anyone in the public wish to comment on this?
Is it say phase 2?
All set? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 4 to 0.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Dan.
Under the next one, we have the FY '24 Pavement Management Plan. We implemented this a few years back, the first portion of it, we repaved the access roads to the Chatham Road well field. What we're proposing to do with this is to propose, repave the access roads to the Depot Road, Depot Street well field, apologies. The 175 number, we put together last year, working with Highway, looking at the county bids for pavement, so that was the source of that figure.
Thank you. Joe, comments?
Nope.
Mary?
It's already in your draft warrant.
Mary?
No, also.
Don?
I'm good.
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Motion to support?
Move to support the FY '24 Pavement Management Plan, subject to final language.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further questions? Anyone in the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 4-0. Go ahead, Dan.
Next, we have the FY '24 Route 28 Water Main Replacement. The current recommended appropriation amount is 17.5 million. What I would say as part of that figure is, we're still looking to reconnect with Mass DOT and evaluate our project costs against the Mass DOT standards. We are still currently carrying a number of items that I believe will be reduced or eliminated by partner with Mass DOT, but we don't have confirmation yet, so this is at present the recommended funding amount, anticipating it will go down. Also, if you recall from, I believe it was last week's meeting, I am hoping to obtain 2024 community project funding. I don't wanna be too optimistic, but we did complete the application as of last Friday for Congressman Keating's office, and I did request up to $5 million for this project, so we'll see where that goes.
Thank you, Dan. Larry?
I'm fine with it, and to Dan's point of, yeah, this is a conservative number, we can, town moderator, let's just reduce the fund on it, with the town motion, these more, not, not quite as agreeable by raising them out with the, with the motion, so I'm fine with it.
Don?
I'm good.
Mary?
Also.
Motion to, Joe, any?
Just that, and I think council would have shared it with Dan, in anticipation of potential funding from the federal government, the motion will make reference to that as well. So that's our top number, and it might be reduced. Did you have that, Dan?
Gary, anything from your board on this?
No.
Also. Motion to support?
Mr. Chair, I move that, this is the water main, the water main replacement, okay, motion to support the article for FY '24 Route 28 Water Main Replacement.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any, any questions from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 4-0. Go ahead, Dan.
Next one is also in support of Route 28 Water Main Replacement Project. We were hoping that we would be able to piggyback on Mass DOT's easement that they are taking right next to Herring River for drainage improvements, but they said, go get your own. With that, I'm requesting we include an article for an easement at 129 Route 28. I have already spoke with the property owner, and they were open to an easement, so I recommended carrying about $10,000 to be funded from retained earnings, basing that figure off of what we've been paying for the sewer easements. Thank you, Dan.
Joe?
Just to Dan's point, however, this is not in your draft warrant presently, it's not in the update that I have, so it could be placed based on the title, that's what you did last week, and I believe we're working with Amy Questle on that, correct?
Yeah.
So we will have specific language, the article does not yet exist.
Don?
Can you make it exist so we can, we done that last week?
Yeah, what I would recommend, if you wanna do what you did last week, is that you would vote to place the article known as, and then...
129. We'll go around the table, but I would just...
Larry?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with this, known as easement, Route 28 easement, utility easement.
Don, we'll, we'll call on Don for that language. Mary?
Yeah, I'm fine with that, makes sense.
Go ahead, Don.
Mr. Chair, I move that we vote to place on the warrant an article currently known as 129 Route 28 Utility Easement.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any comments? Anyone in the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 4-0. Do we wanna do a motion?
Yep, for the, for the amount of money, it just makes sense to support it also, so I move that we support, you know, the ultimate article currently known as 129 Route 28 Utility Easement.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any comments? Anyone in the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 4-0. Do we wanna do a motion?
Yep, for the, for the amount of money, it just makes sense to support it also, so I move that we support, you know, the ultimate article currently known as 129 Route 28 Utility Easement.
Second.
Moved and seconded to support. Questions? Larry? Don?
Nope.
Mary? Joe?
Just a word, Smith, to be consistent, can we call that a motion to adopt the article?
Sure.
Or recommend that the article be adopted?
Sure.
Support?
Adopted.
The other one was support.
Okay. Anyone in the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 4-0.
Thank you.
Next, for water, we have a proposed amendment to the water bylaw relative to increasing the fines associated with violation of water use restrictions. Included in the packet was a strike-through version of what's being proposed for this article, which is increasing the fines from $50 for first violation and $100 for each subsequent, to $100 for first violation, $300 for each subsequent.
Questions? Larry?
I'm very much in favor of this article, and it goes into effect when the state lists us as drought conditions. So it's not a, it's gonna happen, hopefully not that often. Have you, have you had public hearings on this?
We have not yet. It has been discussed a number of times at water commissioners' meetings about having a public hearing in advance of town meeting for this one, as well as the next.
Okay.
Don?
No, I just, I certainly support it because we...
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Gary, is there a reason that you'd want these separate, or can they be folded into the same article? Bylaw Amendment One and Bylaw Amendment Two, since they appear to be going after the same problem in a different direction.
It was originally one article, and what we thought about it, we hate to see the article fail because of discussions against private wells. We decided to put into two articles because we know that private wells are going to be an issue for a lot of discussion. And the reason for the language, for the fines, to go from $50 to the $300, people have basically told us, as commissioners, we don't care about the fines, we'll pay them, and we're gonna war. We're trying to get the point across that it's not even about the money. We're losing money by the department chasing these fines. We're trying to get people just to follow the restrictions and do the right thing, basically. I have more comments for the private wells when we get to that next one, or when you're talking about it now, but that's the reason...
We'll keep them, Stan.
That's the reason we separate it. We don't want to see us lose the capability to raise fines with the wells attached here.
Okay, it's still sad from my perspective. When I moved into town, I used to think that we were working off the same aquifer.
And I think I just wanted to clarify, 90% of the town is doing the right thing. I mean, they realize, and it's not just people with private wells, people with irrigation are also, also watering. So it's not just private well users. I'm sure, as I said, Tom, a private well isn't watering. So I don't want to target private wells as, as the problem.
Yeah.
It's, it's both sides of it, but 90% of the town, we were down pumping 2 million gallons the previous year because people were following their restrictions. So I want to make sure that house residents were really doing the right thing for the majority of the population.
Just sad.
All set?
Yep.
For now? Mary?
I think you'll find the town very supportive of that. I heard a lot more comments from people complaining about this one and that one watering. I, I wouldn't think you'd have any trouble with that. Did you, were you successful in collecting the money, even though it's a pain in the neck?
Yes. We issued about $50,000 in citations to date. I think we've collected around 38. And then we have a handful of hearings with the Orleans District Court in beginning of April.
Anyone in the public related to the fine schedule, not private well? Sorry, Norine first.
Just a little housekeeping on the fines, on the going to 100, 300. That's actually the amount that's been in our rules and regulations for many years. We didn't discover the old amount until we went into the water restrictions last year. And quite frankly, the district court doesn't want any part of $50 fines and chasing them. It's just too low an amount to deal with, so it's really just going up to what we already have.
And adding some teeth to it as a bylaw.
Yeah.
Thank you. Joe?
Just again, a reminder that this is not yet in your warrant. I have a potential title, if you wanted to use that. And I think it's also helpful that if you do look at what was provided by the superintendent, so you're talking about Chapter 300, which is water, and then you can see Section 5, there's two changes to the dollar amount of the penalties. And then on Chapter 16, excuse me, Section 16 of the same chapter. And that appears to be the extent of the amendments, correct? So it's pretty straightforward. It is amending by deleting and replacing certain sections. But it is not yet in the warrant.
What was the title that you...
So what I'm working on is amend Chapter 300 of the general bylaws relative to water restriction violation penalties.
And place it on the warrant. So moved.
See what you did there.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Anyone in the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four zero? I would, I would think it would be very important to your board to have a public hearing. Certainly, if the public hearing raises a lot of concern, we could indefinitely postpone on town meeting floor if, if it went horrible. On the next article, I would say, in my mind, it's already horrible. I don't think Don's gonna agree, but I think we're light years away from restricting private well use and private property rights. And not to have a public hearing at this point, in my mind, is a recipe for disaster on town meeting floor, and, and an addition of hours of people that are gonna fight for their private property rights. And, well, I'll leave it at that, and I think you can probably tell where I'm going with this one. Chairman Carrero?
I reached out to Dan Thursday or Friday, had him put it back on the agenda for the board's reconsideration, because I agree, I have concerns telling people what they can do with their private property. I understand as a board member, it's all process, and why it's wanted, needed. I would like to go, and I think the board, we've had many, many discussions over it, to try to be more educated, maybe put a pamphlet together for our next billing. We've had a local landscape come in and educate us about watering, times, the amount, which I thought was very helpful. Maybe have them come back in, help us with some language, put that in a pamphlet, how many, how many days you need to water to keep your grass long, green. The timeframe, the amount of days you need to do it. So before we start telling people what they can do with their private wells, I'd like to go along the education route. But again, that's, that's my, my feelings on it. We're gonna bring it back, have another discussion on it, and obviously, if we do move forward, there would be a public hearing, so people have the opportunity to speak their mind. But that's where we're at right now.
Thank you, Gary. Dan, before we get to Norine, why don't we just give the public an overview of what the article proposal was, so that everyone knows what we're talking about?
So if I can just preface, we just received language from KP Law today in final format for the proposed revisions to the bylaws. So we could now ultimately have a public hearing with what would be in the warrant. That said, I would say this was born out of public outcry during the water use restrictions that we had last summer. To Mary's point, we were getting a lot of people who were very upset that people had wells, could use them, when people connected to the town water supply could not irrigate. So this was really brought out in response to, you know, the kind of a public request for, kind of, we're all eggs in the same basket. So that's where this was born out of.
That's a good, that's a good start. Larry?
Well, Gary, you make a good point, and Michael on private. I've been supportive of some restrictions because just personally, it irritates me to go buy lawns, and, and, you know, it's okay to water a private well, when we know where, and as Don cynically said, we're the same, get the water from the same place. But I also get offended when I watch people that are sprinkling their lawns in the middle of the afternoon, because we know they're on timers. They could easily do that at night and have less water use. And so I do like the education, because it's just, not only in private, there's, you know, when you should water, when not. And so it's probably bigger than, but I would, I would love to find a way to convince people they shouldn't be watering during a drought, and it does make a difference if you have private wells. But I would, I, I, I like your approach on education at this point.
Thank you, Larry. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm flexible, I can be convinced. But the, the only thing that still drives me nuts, and I'm not going to push to put this on, I feel for people who have wells, because we've had a policy, even when it wasn't codified anywhere, that when new buildings were getting approved, and from the 90s forward, we weren't approving subdivisions unless they were hooked up to town water, for a whole bunch of reasons, including testing, because your water is tested all the time. What does drive me insane, even more so than what Larry's talking about, is the corporate use of private wells, where you see, like Stop and Shop has their, their wells, and they're sprinkling, and it's raining. They don't seem to care one way or the other about things. And half of the heads are pointing towards the road, which I suppose they want to irrigate, but it's just annoying.
A lot of calls on it.
Yeah, and you have no jurisdiction. That's the part that really would have disturbed me, but I'm not willing to go after anybody's individual residents, because that's how they got their water, and it's their property.
Thank you, Don. Mary?
Yeah, before this discussion, I was just curious on the legality of having a regulation on someone's pri, I'm guessing you've already talked to lawyers about that.
Yeah, and I know the town of Orleans recently adopted the inclusion of private wells in their water use restrictions a couple of years ago, so...
Okay.
That was the model that we were looking at for reference.
I do think you're on the right track, though, going with education first.
Thank you. Joe?
I don't have a proposed title. I think it'd be well served to wait for the reconsideration vote.
Yeah. Gary, you want to open up to your board for comments?
Thanks, Gary. So I just wanted to mention for the public, too, I haven't checked in with them recently, but we, we sit in between Dennis, Orleans, Chatham, and Yarmouth. They don't enforce water restrictions, or maybe they've started since last fall, but I don't think so. So it makes it really tough on us, because we're really the only ones doing it. You see this on all the, you know, neighborhood social media and everything else. So our conversations have been about education, but in terms of wells, our board conversations, you were at the last one, was really about the fact that, you know, it'd be great to have them in our jurisdiction, but are we really gonna enforce it? And quite frankly, for wells, probably no. You know, probably never. Because we, we could barely enforce, you know, what we did. It was an experiment last year, and, and it cost us more than it saved us, you know, so, but, so there's that problem, that we're in, in the middle of everything else. And then the other aspect that came up on this topic that still has to be vetted is, you know, why would we want to restrict wells that aren't in Zone 2 areas? You know, if they're not doing anything to hurt our drinking water quantities, you know, why would we even want to go there? You know, so there's just an awful lot to this topic.
Anyone else on your board? Anyone in the public?
John Senate, 20 Hoy Road, Howard's Fort, longtime resident. You've got problems with wells. I'm sorry, but those people paid for the wells. Half of this property in this town is watered by a well. Every field, every way you look. There is no restrictions on a private well. You cannot restrict mineral rights on somebody's ground, whether it be oil, water, or gold. It's not gonna happen. We went through this with the fertilizer thing. The state takes care of the majority. The Board of Health gives you a permit to get a well, to keep it away from the surface. Simple. I've talked to all the well drillers, all three of them. They'll be more than happy to have a meeting with anybody that wants to have a meeting, but the state will be there, too, and will explain the legitimate part of it. We have permits, we have a well, it's our property. We can use it.
Thank you, John.
Simple.
Thank you. So this is not going on the warrant, as of now. We'll wait to hear back from you in your, your next meeting. Okay? Perfect, thank you. Dan, moving on?
Moving on. Let's talk about water, more talk about wastewater. So wastewater, we have the Phase 3 East Howard's Collection System expansion, extension, whatever we want to call it. The funding amount, or the recommended funding amount is 50 million to be funded through that exclusion. Do you want to take them individually, or should I?
Individual. Larry, let's start with you.
Well, we had this discussion before in some details. I think we just kind of have to explain this for public hearing and to build support for this, we wish you go forward.
So I'm hoping that next Monday's meeting, we'll have a full wastewater update to the Board of Selectmen, which will really be the start to our PR outreach campaign. I've been waiting to release, you know, a Phase 3 map until we get to vet it through the Board of Selectmen, talk about the changes in price relative to recent discussions we've had. So I'm hoping that next Monday's meeting will be a good format to kick that off.
We have GHD coming in with Dan next week. Don?
Yeah, I'm with Larry. The headline right now is $50 million, and you'd have to read further to find out what it was for, so you definitely have to do something to explain everything.
Mary?
I'll wait till next Monday.
As far as putting this in the warrant?
It's already in your draft.
Okay. And as far as supporting it, it sounds like it's the board wants to wait to support this, or?
I'd, I'd like to wait until we have the first, so...
Dan, do you, can you talk about some of your, some of the funding sources that you're considering anyway, at least what we're applying for, for this 50 million?
Yeah.
You're not anticipating this is gonna cost the public $50 million?
Thank you for asking. No, ultimately, we're anticipating varying degrees of principal forgiveness. I reached out to Nate Keenan from the Clean Water Trust, as well as someone from the Treasury, seeing if they could provide any specific information relative to principal forgiveness. They were not able to do so as of last week. That said, I do know that we are currently rated as a Tier 1 disadvantaged community, which makes us eligible for 3.3% principal forgiveness. And we're also eligible for forgiveness through the Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund. That said, I don't know yet what those forgiveness amounts are going to be. I've seen a couple of articles recently saying that the fund doesn't have the money they were anticipating, given the projects that are coming in. So last project, we did receive 25% principal forgiveness for Phase 2. I would imagine at a maximum, that's what we would get for Phase 3, but likely somewhere in the middle. Beyond that, in addition to the 3.3% principal forgiveness under the disadvantaged communities program, they've also stated in a number of webinars and things that the trust has put on, that they are looking to augment those percentage points with the infrastructure bill money. So I expect we will get a larger percentage than that. However, we don't have specifics on it at this point.
What are the likelihoods of having all that before town meeting?
I will press as hard as I can.
Okay. Any follow-up questions, Larry?
Not for me, no.
Don?
Just a follow-up comment, because Dan and I have spoken about this. The public needs to separate these two things in their mind, that municipal county board that's coming out of our rooms taxes, which I'm a little disappointed reading about in the newspaper, because I serve on that board, and we hired an actuarial to come up with those numbers. So that being the case, it's still a wholly separate discussion from that and the Clean Water Trust, which is the state. And I think we can reasonably anticipate that they're still in the business of trying to buy down projects, especially based on the tiers. So just because you read an article that, you know, there isn't gonna be money available because of the county, that doesn't mean that the state isn't going to be helping. It's just, I don't know, it's a pretty big ask to get to your water, get into you that quickly.
Mary?
No, nothing. It's obviously a big number, but we know it's been coming at us, and we'll have to sort it out with all those sources.
I share the frustration. I can't, you know, not being able to have anyone tell you what the anticipated principal forgiveness has been is incredibly frustrating. You know, and I articulated to them, like, "Look, we got town meeting coming up in May. I need to be able to tell the taxpayers, you know, what this is really gonna cost." And through those correspondence and everything prior to that, they have just not been able to provide specifics about much.
Any more out of the county with the second half of the money they're sitting on, figuring out how they're gonna disperse that?
I have not heard anything.
Maybe a phone call to our delegate to...
I could call Christie directly, because she would know more than our delegate.
Yeah, maybe, maybe we start to try and press that a little bit, because we know how the money was allocated to them.
Yeah. They've already approved that, that's, that's the second half of approved allocation.
That's right. Joe?
I just want to emphasize that Dan's management of these proposals and projects fits everything the board was looking for over the last several years, meaning Dan has constant meetings with GHD. In fact, that's borne out by the fact that we raised our estimate on the cost, because we did not want to go anywhere near anything that happened in the past, where we did not have numbers that we were comfortable with. So the 50 million number you see is, is meant to be the highest possible number we see out there, and we don't expect to hit it. And that is meant to be offset by any funding sources we can rely upon. And so I do want to emphasize that as much as we have sticker shock with the price, I do want to emphasize that Dan and the team have been doing exactly what you want them to do, and in meeting not only the spirit, but the actual direction of the law, to evaluate proposals that come before town meeting, as having been vetted to cost. And so I think that's a very key point to bear out, that as we come back to town meeting for major expenditures and appropriations on wastewater, this is not what we were looking at years before. Would you agree with that assessment?
Absolutely. Oh, yeah.
Larry?
When GHD comes in next week, I'd like to follow up part of our previous discussion that you, in some sense, there's an expansion in this proposal because taking on ponds. You know, ponds, it was early on, the ponds was, I think, Phase Eight, because the hope was we wouldn't get there.
The 50 doesn't include the Great Sand Lakes.
Oh, it does. I was sure you needed to detail that if it is, but well, that's easy detail then.
That's an extra 10 million or so.
And it still has phosphorus.
Noreen?
It's only housekeeping, but this word is driving me crazy. The name that was given this is East Harwich Wastewater Collection System Expansion. And I find that confusing, because we didn't expand anything. It was always part of the plan, and I think it could be confusing 10 years from now. So could we maybe eliminate the word expansion and substitute, what would you like, Dan? Phase Three northern area?
Extension?
Extension. Anything but expansion.
That's a good point, I agree with that.
Well, this is the beginning of Phase Three, so it's just Phase Three. East Harwich Collection System.
I'll just call it Phase Three.
Or Phase, yeah, Phase Three. It's just Phase Three.
You're starting it from the beginning.
Just as your editor of warrant, so on page eight of the document that you have later on, we have East Harwich wastewater collection system expansion, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow a sum of money to implement Phase Three and portions of Phase Eight at the Town of Harwich Comprehensive Wastewater Management, CWMP, and it goes on. If we call it Phase Three, are we not touching on Phase Eight?
We are touching portions of Phase Eight.
Yep.
What about swapping the word implementation for expansion?
Extension?
I just want to emphasize, I have no ownership of this, and it's what we've been working on through the Capitol Outlay, and I'm sure Dan would agree to any changes, as long as we're still getting to the net effect of what we're looking for from the voters.
We'll give them a minute, they're deliberating, so I think they're going to come up with something.
Well, they can come up, because I agree with you.
Noreen Scott.
I would just say extension, because we don't want to muddy it up.
Dan likes extension. No matter what I offer.
So we're removing the word expansion and replacing it with an extension?
That's right.
I don't think that's an improvement, Dan.
Implementation.
How to make it any less confusing.
Implementation would be a good word.
Are we, are we gaining more precise in what we, than our ability? Because Phase Three, you know, Phase Eight was always looked at as sometime in the future possibility. Well, we decide the futures now and include that portion of Phase Eight. I would just call it Phase Three and go with it.
I'd just eliminate expansion.
Yeah.
And then it can just be East Harwich Collection System.
Joe?
Again, I'm just the editor.
Okay.
So it sounds like you wanted to read East Harwich Wastewater Collection System.
Just leave it at that.
Yeah.
And then back to Joe's comments, Dan's comments, and Larry's comments, I see no reason why the board wouldn't vote to support this. It's been a long time that we've been talking about this. The education really starts now, but I have not heard in any of our conversations over the last year us not contemplating this, so I don't understand why we wouldn't just vote it to make the warrant part of this easier. We're running out of time.
No, no, I'm in favor of that, as long as we drop the word expansion in calls.
Can I get a motion to support?
I move we support the Phase Three East Harwich Collection System, $50 million funded by debt exclusion.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Further discussion? Anyone in the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Four zero. Go ahead, Dan.
Next, we have the West Harwich Route 28 sewer main installation. Currently recommended funding amount is the amount of 6.5 million dollars. This is to cover the area from the Dennis Town Line to the Herring River Bridge to be completed under the Mass DOT Road Reconstruction Project.
To Joe's question earlier, this is already on the Capitol Plan? Open it up, Mary? Any questions, comments?
Nope, we've talked about this several times. I'm in favor.
Don?
I agree, Mr. Chair, but a number of people have approached me with, didn't we already vote to do this? And we didn't vote to actually fund it.
Correct.
So I just want that out there. Yeah, you're not going crazy. You did vote to support doing this, but that was the engineering. This is the actual build.
Larry?
I totally support it. This is, and this, you can defend this, I think, usually at town meeting, that saves us a lot of money if we follow in with the highway department. So that's, that's the key to this, this article.
Right. Gary?
Dan, can you just touch these two, both the road, but once that road is redone and paved, how long is it to cut that?
Yeah, there's a...
So there is, there is a timeframe to that that needs to be done.
It's a five-year road cut moratorium. So conceivably, if both of these projects between the water and sewer main install are completed, we won't have to go back and cut that road at any point to construct the rest of the sewer system for East Har- or West Harwich, or for, you know, water man repairs or things of that nature.
Thank you, Dan. Joe, anything?
Just that you've already placed it in the warrant, and you have now changed the title, so however you want to treat it.
A motion to support?
I move that we support the article currently known as West Harwich Route 28 Sewer Main Installation Project at 6.5 million dollars.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Anyone in the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it. Thank you. During the meeting?
Close the meeting?
Oh, yeah.
Motion to...
I entertain a motion. Gary, you could do this. You know, you're right.
Thank you. Thank you. See you next week, Dan. Okay, discussion on fiscal year 2024 department operating budgets. I think I, you know, I'd like to start, we'll start with Joe, but we did discuss pulling the HR position out of the budget, and we would need a motion to do so. We discussed not being ready for it and having to change the formula, so I would entertain discussion or motion. Don?
I move that we, for the time being, withdraw that from consideration for this year's town meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Just one question.
Go ahead, Mary.
So that is still in here?
Yes.
The money for that position is still in here?
Oh, you never...
No, it was, it was removed. I understood the consensus of the board, so it does, those figures are not reflected in the document you have tonight.
But you were looking for a motion to remove it.
Correct, right, yep.
It's, it's there, but it's unfunded.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four zero. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So what I'd like to do, and a previous speaker had mentioned, so the material you have in your packet is meant to indicate Appendix B, which is going to be the supporting documentation for Article Four, the operating budget. And so right now, I have access through Munis to the 2022 actual. The 2023 original budget is voted at last year's town meeting. And this column that now refers to the BOs recommendation, and that's how we've done it in years past. I can work with accounting. It's going to take some pulling, though, to get prior years information, meaning fiscal year 21. I want to make sure we have that correct. Otherwise, you can see the three-year history. The percentages tie back to comparing the 2024 BOs recommended to the 2023 original budget. As I mentioned, if you look on page one, line 24, the dollar amount of $418,861 under administration no longer has the $135,000 related to the prospective HR director position. And then if you carry on to page five, you'll see that line number 130 is reflecting the departmental operating budgets. So we see a 4.8% increase year over year, again, comparing 2024 BOs recommend to 2023 original budget. So that obviously includes the other enhancement of services that you've debated and have included. Then you can see the line related to our total debt service. And then the unidentified, or the untitled section next are those semi and fixed costs that we see often when we review the sources and uses document. The overall point is if you take the total departmental budget of $30,502,508 and add the debt service and the semi and fixed costs, that's where you come down to a total cost of Article Four of $43,101,586, or a 2.2% increase year over year. And then drawing your attention to the seven full-time positions that are still embedded in the operating budget, you can see the lines that go back to those salary and wages. And then separating out from that, the three part-time positions. All right, I didn't mess up. Two underbuilding and one under conservation. And so that identifies in generic form for right now, the adds to, or the increases in personnel that are reflected in the budget. So you will see that Appendix B is slightly different than years past. What's really truncated here was all the other language that related to other costs that are either covered by other articles or are actually covered under state aid. So I'd be more than happy to answer any questions regarding Appendix B as it relates to Article Four.
Thank you. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm not going to hold to a philosophical discussion, we're getting too close to the town meeting, but I am going to say, or ask one question. Is this table going to wind up being in the body of the article itself rather than as an appendix? Because it makes a difference. In years past, people, especially our legal counsel, has made comments that if it isn't in the article, it wasn't binding on us. So this will be broken out as part of the article?
That was not the plan that I was working on. What would also be in Article Four, that's not in the article, but in years past, is the funding table. And so that's where you see the various sources of uses that we use to pay the article. But that table has never been embedded within the warrant article itself. Anything that comes after estimated cost is understood to be outside the article and informational only.
Don?
Is there any problem with just putting the table in the article? Because this thing was, that's the only hot button part about any part of the budget is if you put it there and it's readily identified as part of the article, I don't see that there's going to be a problem with anybody.
I don't, so which table would we be talking about? The funding article or?
No, just the, just the personnel part. Just as, if it's a table that's actually at the tail end of the article itself.
Joe, go ahead.
To me, that's a policy discussion at the board level. I defer to that, but I also want to make reference that if you look under New Business E, you're going to have a discussion about additional materials to be included in the warrant. So for me, I'll take my direction from the board, and you might want to rely upon that because there's any number of ways that we can impact upon the entire warrant, because it's your warrant.
Okay. I don't mind bouncing around, because that's normal for me. But while this is fresh, we've heard Don's opinion on what should be in there. Mary?
I think it's important that it's in there. I'm not as particular as to where, but if Don thinks that will resolve the issue by having it part of the article, I'm for that.
Thank you, Mary. Larry?
Yes, I'm with Mary on this, and well, everyone, I guess. I want to be there. I don't have a strong opinion where it should show up, but it should be workable. The issue is not workable, but I, this is a great move forward, by the way.
Right.
In the appendix.
Well, play it somewhere, so people can look at it.
But at least somewhere. Noreen, before I get on to myself.
Thank you. Originally, as many people know, I was a strong supporter of the older method, the separate article method for new hires. But after much reflection, I'm in support of this newer table method, let me call it the third method, placing a simple chart of new hires either in the operating budget itself, under the funding table, or in Appendix B. But if you'll allow me, I'd like to tell you the reasons I changed my mind, because it was a long process.
I feel like I had a big part in that. Go ahead.
I think it was just that thing of keeping our minds open, truly, to, to change. But, but I feel that the separate article method, even though I firmly supported it, is a bit awkward. But I also think that the new method of just including the positions in the budget is way too streamlined. When we create a new position, it's the most permanent raise in our tax base that there can possibly be. The town is supportive of any staffing plan presented by the TA, but I feel that these positions deserve extra handling, as the taxpayers will literally be paying for them forever. I can't remember the last time that the operating budget was amended at town meeting, but it must have been a long time ago. But in the real case that someone wishes to amend the budget, the new hire table would give the town meeting attendee the information needed to raise an amendment. We would have to, on Joe's draft, we would have to add the salary amounts to that. Then the people in the audience, if they wanted to do it, they'd have the line number, the department, the position, and the amount. That's all they need for an amendment. Another thing is that one huge benefit of this third benefit, this third method, excuse me, would be that all the dollars for staff would be, already be included in the operating budget. Since a lot of people use the appendix from year to year to look at it, that would be a big help to them. If the positions, particularly this year, since there's so many, are in a separate article, then those tables that are printed in our warrant are never accurate. It's true, I've heard people say you could amend it, you know, at town meeting, add them back to those budget amounts, but it still wouldn't be printed in the warrant. By this method, the totals would be the totals, mostly, I mean, unless we voted differently, but we'd start off that way anyway. Another huge benefit, for me anyway, is that when people are trying to trace additions and things like that to departments, God love you, good luck to you, if there isn't some kind of notation or mention of it. There's no way you can look at the larger departments and try to figure out when positions were added, between the new people, the old people, the change in steps and everything else. It's, it's just impossible. This way, you'd have that table to follow from year to year when you were trying to do analysis. The last thing I'd recommend would be a policy change, making it strongly recommended or mandatory that the CHIA, who gives the budget overview, go briefly over these items and also direct the taxpayers to where the information is, whether it's in the appendix or in the article. I'd suggest two wordsmithing things to the town administrator's draft table that he's put in this packet. Personally, I would add the words where it says enhancement of services, call in additions to staffing, I would add after staffing, included in Article Four, operating budget. That would be just me, just to make it clear to people looking at it that it's not, you know, these numbers, when there's numbers on top of what's already in the budget. But that's just me. And of course, add the salary amounts, as I said earlier. Personally, I think that this gives due notice to the town meeting attendees and offers the info needed to amend if they desire. My one concern at this point is that I don't believe the appendices are printed in the newspaper, so those people would have no notice of these positions. So I'll let people of a higher pay grade sort that one out, but I mean, that would lend me to think, personally, my personal preference would also be that it be a small table right below the funding table in the, excuse me, article itself. So I thank you, folks, for giving consideration to a new way to do it.
Thank you, Noreen. I am still completely perplexed as to why we haven't done this as a policy change throughout the year as this conversation has come up and, and it's been talked about multiple, multiple times. And for the last two town administrators, we have just put them in the operating budget. And there will be a document for us to discuss a policy on this. And the town clerk thanked her, she did a tremendous amount of work researching warrants as to when we did this and how we did this. And the town administrator that did a tremendous amount of work during budget season on how this has been going. Now, this, to me, has been born on the back of micromanaging at, at best. When it's been in the old warrants, it normally has been related to an override. We're not going for an override. We have the money. We have a balanced budget presented by the town administrator, who we hire to administer the town, with enhancements to services that have been discussed all year long and requests from department heads. from department heads. And not every one of them was said yes to. And in 2011, Article 66, though it wasn't for a new position, but it was to fund a regrade for a council on aging outreach worker, then-chairman Peter Hughes, Finance Committee recommends that this article be indefinitely postponed. These increases are large, and this is not the appropriate way to manage town staffing and compensation. This is the rightful responsibility of the town administrator, selectmen, and department heads. Unanimous vote from the town, from the Finance Committee, nine to zero, unanimous on that statement. So now we find ourselves being presented with a balanced budget, no overrides, with enhancement of services that we've all talked about for the year. And now all of a sudden, we want to micromanage and have articles, recommendation from the Finance Committee, not this board, articles to be more transparent. And I don't quite understand it. And historically, if you look back, despite what Sandra Hall says, hers is wrong. And we will have that conversation as a policy. I think Appendix B is exactly where this belongs. And the board either supports the budget and the enhancement services, or it doesn't. And to Noreen's point, I'd be perfectly happy reading that into the State of Union address before town meeting. And I think as part of Article Four, the town administrator can point people to Appendix B and explain briefly the enhancement of services. But why we're getting into this change and not as a policy discussion when we haven't done it this way through the entire last town administrator and this town administrator, with the exception of an override? And historically, look back, it is not consistent whatsoever. So I'm on the opinion that we should put it in Appendix B. We should alert town meeting that it is in Appendix B and give a brief explanation to why we're doing the enhancement of services. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm not trying to relitigate any of that stuff. I'm not, that's a different discussion entirely. All I'm saying is essentially what Noreen was saying is it's somewhat like a contract situation. You can't know what you don't know when you don't know it. I mean, if we can't put people on notice prior to coming to town meeting, you don't know whether they're going to be motivated to come or not. It's not our town meeting, it's their town meeting. If we just put this table in the warrant itself, it'll be printed in the newspaper. Everyone will be put on notice in the exact same mechanism you're discussing, but just in a different page. And I'll vote for that. I mean, I think it's just a matter of putting people on notice who haven't showed up at the place yet and can't be directed to anything because they're reading it in the newspaper.
Thank you, Don. Mary?
I thought we already agreed at, maybe it was the last meeting or the meeting before, that we were not going to do an article for each one of these. So I thought that was already a done deal.
I'm just explaining because we continue to get emails from Finance Committee and members of the public. And to Don's point earlier, it is a hot button.
Yeah, okay.
And to me, I'm trying to put the hot button away and do it the same way we've been doing it, which has worked with the addition to what Don has suggested that we pointed out. But I do think that instead of changing Article Four and its format, I'm very comfortable with Appendix B and pointing out that it's in Appendix B. But I do believe that's a vote of this board on where we're going to put it, and that's really where this conversation started.
I'll have my part to add to that. Because we've disagreed on a lot of this, yeah, to Noreen's point, I wanted to be sure we explained to people. I think this does it, so I think we've agreed to this. And I'm comfortable with where it is now. I have no problem as long as you point it out. I think we owe to the public to make sure it is out there in front of everyone because we can defend it. These positions, we all agree, are very critically needed. And if we can't make that argument, shame on us.
Thank you, Larry. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to be totally clear, it's not about articles, it's not about prior discussions, it's not about identifying. You can't identify it to somebody who wasn't on notice about it in the first place, if you're putting it that way. It will not table, it will not be printed in the newspaper as part of the warrant. If it goes as the tail end of the article, it will. It's the only difference, it's an editorial difference, but I'd like to be able to put people on notice that if you're so moved, you can come down and make an argument about this. I am willing to support this. I'm willing to support the positions. Changed my position entirely on that. I just wish that we'd be able to tell people before they set foot in a room and before you can point out the appendix, that there is an appendix. And the only way to do that is get it printed in the newspaper with this table as part of the article itself, not part of the appendix.
I would like to put this to bed, actually. What do we need for a motion then to go through with what we've agreed to? My understanding of the agreement that even with Michael somewhat dissent, you're okay with the appendix and as long as you?
I'm okay with the appendix in article, the appendix, Article B, not in the article. I don't know why we would change the article.
Okay.
I have no problem mentioning, Larry, it's in Appendix B in the article.
I got that. I'm just trying to see where we're at now. Where was that? And then you're going to make a comment on it. What do we need for a motion to get this done so we don't talk about it anymore?
I like your style.
If you're suggesting that what you have in your packet is suitable, then you would say what is presented is suitable.
Okay. I'll make that motion then. That would move ahead with this article as stated.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion, Don? Mary?
I'm good with it as is. And although it may not be in the article, there's a certain reporter here in the room that we could probably ask to put a, what do you call it, an article in the paper. We could probably ask for that.
Well, I would argue that we've taken an extra step to put this out there. People have to take some action on their own as well. Let me, okay, that's not said.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Abstention? Don, you or I?
Begrudgingly.
Okay. Four to zero.
Thank you.
Michael, I have one more question on the operating budget.
Perfect. That's what we're going to get to next. Go, Larry.
The, not so much of the question as the comment, but we look at total debt service. Does that include the capital items that are in the plan, or that would be in addition to that?
No, that would be in addition to. So what you're looking for under those separate articles is an authorization to borrow.
Yeah.
And then at the town election, if the authorization to borrow is there, if the voters approve that, we have a borrowing authorization. The debt and principal and interest for that would be at a later time, and the likelihood of us going out to borrow in that year is slim.
Yeah.
So it would be reflected in future years' debt service.
The reason I raise that is that was, that's how I understood it, actually. But the reason I raise it is I would find it useful is if when we present capital budget items, pick the $50 million, for instance, that we have a table showing what that means to the future operating budgets. Because sometimes we put those big numbers out, it scares people away from even talking about it. And that if it's a 20-year budget, you know, we're trying to keep debt down, you know, it's good and bad, but I think you can at least explain it that it's not, whatever we call this, use that as a bad example. We passed $50 million, that's not going to be paid next year, so 20, 30 years. So we had, with the capital items, we have some, let people know what that means to their pocketbook annually, I think that would, that'd be a good service.
Thank you, Larry.
If I could respond.
Yep.
I agree first and foremost. And secondly, we're able to do that relying upon not only bond counsel but bond advisor. So we use Hilltop Securities. And as we go through this process, and if town meeting approves of the appropriation and authorizes to borrow, and if the voters endorse that at the election, we then report that, we being the town clerk, the town accountant, through the tax recaps sheet later in the fall, what our authorizations are. Once that happens.
The way to do that ahead of time is an assumption to give some people a feeling for what that means.
So.
That's the point I'm trying to get at.
I get that. What I was going to say, though, is we then do that through Hilltop Securities because they're aware of any, as we just heard, whether there are SRF funds that would impact upon it. So as the superintendent mentioned in your earlier discussion, we might be able to rely on varying degrees that determine the interest level. But what I really want to emphasize is it's great reporting, and I agree with it because I need it, but I need a finance director to do that. We do not have the bandwidth presently, and I don't know that we would have had the bandwidth to get into that level of exercise with a finance director. We may need to rely upon our vendors. So to do it in the manner that we envision, we're not ready to do that, certainly not for this town meeting. And the best we can hope for in the next fiscal year is the debt schedule from our vendors. But there's hope for the five-year forecast. I'll be reporting to you later this year that I'm working with DLS.
Well, this is what it is. I think we missed an opportunity to explain that, you know, because you can beam overhead with a large number, and that's not, that's not a meaningful number to people because they're worried about their annual tax bill.
Yep. I don't disagree. You want to rely upon a better financial mind than your town administrator.
Well, Dan was working with the finance director on debt schedules because I know he presented some of that to the Finance Committee. Am I wrong? On if this borrowing happened, what that, what that would cost?
I believe there was some element to that, but I couldn't say that it was directly to the $50 million and the 6.5 million. I know what we were working on with our debt schedule is confirming that what we had to date was accurate. Because as you heard the discussion in the budget, there were some inaccuracies in those numbers. So I believe they were trying to validate what was already there, not necessarily that then they take the next step of what does this mean going forward.
How many days until town meeting?
Forty-three. Thanks for asking.
So there's no vendor that we can, that we can lean on to try and get some sort of debt schedule?
I can reach out to Hilltop Securities to ask that tomorrow.
If I may, I'd also take the position that this doesn't have to be accurate to the penny. It needs to be in the ballpark number of what we're talking about.
She would reach out? Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Going to do a little deeper than Larry. It was not our finest hour going to town meeting a few years ago when they were having just simple questions about, well, how much are we carrying our debt right now? And nobody can answer it. So whatever view that you're going to get, you can presuppose, well, going into town meeting, somebody's going to get up and say, on an average house, what are we carrying as debt? What hasn't actually hit the debt schedule that we've actually approved? And what is this going to do to those two other figures in total? And we have time to ponder that. I really don't want to be in a position where you have five minutes and we're doing a huddle in the front.
I agree. Thank you. Mary, anything for him?
No.
Larry?
No, I'm just looking at Jill smiling.
Don?
Nope, that's a smirk.
Don, anything?
No, I'm good.
Anything else on the 2024 budget?
No.
Anyone in the public? Okay. The next B, approve the proposed amendments to fiscal year 2024 Personnel Bylaw Compensation Classification Tables.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, what you have in your packet is a cover memo. I had tasked our assistant town administrator with analyzing the personnel bylaws. I want to emphasize, this is not for fiscal year 23. Fiscal year 23 Personnel Bylaw employees got 2% to match the COLA, Cost of Living Adjustment, that other groups got, but that was the extent of it. However, as I know you folks have talked in the past, and recognizing that I strive to have us be recognized as an employer of choice, it now comes for us to discuss what do we want to provide to our personnel bylaw employees. So the memorandum lays out the proposal that I'm presenting to you this evening, and the subsequent pages show you what the changes would look like in the classification and compensation tables. What I want to emphasize is, for me, I would have preferred as the chief personnel administrator at the outset of collective bargaining to first go to the personnel bylaw employees and offer them a package that relates to compensation and classification before we then reached out to the various collective bargaining associations. And that's because the personnel bylaws employees do not enjoy any right to negotiate. Whatever the board determines on recommendations from your administrator is what they get. So what we have here this evening is actually a conservative proposal, and I can say that as a fact and not an opinion, because what this outlines for you is wage adjustments. Now, you'll recall for the six collective bargaining agreements that you've already executed and that we enjoy having signed copies of, you'll see in most cases, there was a dollar amount that was added to the base, and then the cost of living was adjusted. I say it's conservative because I went with a market adjustment of $750 to the base salary, and that is far below what the average collective bargaining association got. In essence, what you're looking at here is to do for the personnel bylaw employees what you have agreed through negotiations for the collective bargaining associations. Again, fiscal year 24, so it would start July 1st. And for this, these costs, we have not done a full cost analysis because I wanted to talk to you folks about the philosophy behind it. But we would be relying upon monies available from the 2022 Annual Town Meeting, Article Four, Line Two. And you may recall, that was the amount that the board put in there to set aside for negotiations. Given that we have money available, I think it's an appropriate use. So there's no additional tax dollars that would be going into this effort.
Thank you, Jill. Larry?
We were talking about history before. I think historically, we've tried to have the personnel bylaws track our contract negotiations. And as you explain it, that's what you've done here, to track those. So I'm supporting the changes.
Thank you. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree with Larry. The only thing that's a little befuddling to me is that because of the format, because of the steps, you can't compare and align the line without flipping pages for each one of these things. It's a little confusing to continue to do that, but I guess people are going to have to do homework. It would have been nice if you'd been able to say fiscal '23, fiscal '24, and align them so you could actually see the differences.
Jill, can we work towards that format?
So Megan had it. I thought in an effort to get it into the packet, we went with eight and a half by 11. So we can do that. It's eight and a half by 14, if not 11 by 17. And we have different columns, so we can provide it in that format as well.
Put it in next week's packet and send it to the selectmen?
Yeah, that's fine. That's it.
Mary?
I'm comfortable with the recommendation.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the proposed amendments to fiscal year 2024 Personnel Bylaw Compensation Classification Tables as presented. Any discussion? Anyone in the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four to zero, Joe?
Thank you.
The next was something I talked about last week. Vote to request Community Preservation Committee to reconsider their vote on dollar amount to go towards Affordable Housing Trust. It was put in for $500,000. That motion never got made. Someone brought up another motion for $250,000, and they funded it at $250,000. And I would like this board to support asking them to reconsider and go to the $500,000. And this really isn't forgetting anything that went on. This really is money to move the needle forward on affordable housing, and taking away the $250,000 really is just punishing and not a cooperative effort to move the needle forward. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't want to get into the whatever went on because they've had varying feelings on the subject. But one bottom-line thought here is, the way this is constructed, the reason you have a trust, and Mary's heard me say this about a half a million times at this point, the reason you have a trust is to aggregate funds so that when an opportunity comes up, you don't have to wait for a town meeting, that you can jump on it right then and there, especially in construction or real estate. Those things are really valuable because time is, creates a function of how much money you're going to need for things. They're still operating on the assumption that we need to tell them what we're going to be spending it on, and that's almost impossible. Larry and I have talked about this. You can't predict something that you don't know unless we actually were at the point of voting on the trust to approve a developer, and there's a real something or other there for you to show them. There isn't anything to show. We've gone through, whatever you want to consider the situation in that trust, we've gone through two town administrators and me, and we've all said the same thing to them. We need an unspecified amount of money to aggregate so that when we have something there, we can go after it. It shouldn't be about a person, it shouldn't be about a process. It really is why we approved the trust in the first place.
I agree. Mary?
I agree, and I'd be glad to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I move that we vote to request that the Community I move that we vote to request that the community preservation committee reconsider their vote on the dollar amount to go to the Harwich Affordable Housing Trust.
From?
From $250,000 to $500,000.
Second. Moved in second. Larry, any comments?
No, I agree with that. You know, the, to CP, just comment, the CPC's great credit. They have managed to fix the accounting system and bring back funds that weren't spent.
Right.
That was a big issue for some years that, going way back, I talked about history, Porshsky's Club was their first one where we didn't get to. Forgot about. So they straightened the books out, then with help of our treasurer. But now they've mistaken that activity with the housing trust, in which it was intended, as Don says, I'm not going to add that, just, I just repeat it. So I think we should, we should move ahead and work with them to better understand what the housing trust is. I do have one question, though. I would, I'd hate to take this route, but you know, at a town meeting, we could offer an amendment to raise it ourselves.
I hope we don't have to.
I wouldn't want to do that, but I'd just throw that out there as we could.
But I agree.
We could.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The reason you wouldn't want to do that, forgetting about what town meeting might want to do, they've got certain buckets of money, and then they have an overall amount that they can tap into. And I dare say that when they roll into town meeting, that it comes down to zero or close to it. So it's cut, then we're going to have to start saying, where do we want you to cut? I mean, it's going to be messy that way. I would rather have them say, okay, I reconsidered, and I agree.
Yeah, good point.
Joe, anything?
Yeah, I'm trying to decide if I should have you folks go through your vote because I don't know that it's meant to impact upon how you vote on the question in front of you. It's more of a comment building on something related.
Go ahead.
So Selectman Howell's spot on. Today, I got notification as the chair of the Board of Trustees that the annual report is due to the Community Preservation Committee sometime in April. Now, Mr. Howell and I have talked in years past, and we've tried to identify that that request for funds is seed money or money to be used to fund housing initiatives, meaning it's very general. And that's because both Mr. Howell and I have said jointly and separately that it is meant, as most other towns do for their CPC funds and their housing, is you put it in there and it's principal. And what we should be doing on the board is eventually creating interest and then disposing of the interest. But the notice I got today is I have to provide a report that asks for the status of the funds that have been granted through CPC going back to inception of the trust. And I've explained in prior reports that that money is, whatever is still, you know, here's the balance as of x-date report, which will not tally up to what you have because we've purchased land, we've made some professional services, but you're asking for when it's going to be expended. And the answer is, we don't know. It's meant to be capital seed money. And so I think this is a great step, and I welcome and I thank you for it. But I think even if this passed unanimously with CPC, we still have to come to agreement on that part of it because the way that our Harwich Community Preservation Committee treats funds for an Affordable Housing Trust Fund are different from other communities. We heard a report today, the town of Falmouth taps into all 10% for his, for housing and an additional 3% on top of that. And so that pipeline goes from CPC straight through the Board of Trustees Housing Trust Fund without any area of question. And there's no expectation of what'd you do with the money.
Well, maybe it's time for a joint meeting with CPC and, and the Board of Selectmen and the housing folks. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's actually worse than what Joe was describing. What, what their position is, that with CPC funds, if you have a project and you haven't spent out the money over whatever period of time they're expecting it to, like one year, two years, they're going to pull back the, the amount of money that they already appropriated to you. We're trying to aggregate, and they're saying, if you haven't used it in a couple of years, we want it back. The way the trust document is constructed, the way the law that enabled the trust document to be created, it comes into the trust, and only by a vote of the trust can it be appropriated out for anything. So there is no recapture. They've got, they're, they're citing their own legislative source, which really is through an association, not a, not a government organization. But it's pretty clear that MGL, that it gets put into the trust until such time as the trust decides what the disposition of it. It could go three years. It could go five years. They could aggregate up to $2 million. It doesn't matter. But they're trying right now to say that there's a time limit, and if you haven't met that time limit and done something with that money from three years ago, we're taking it back.
Yeah, I think it's time for a joint meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone in the public wish to speak on, speak on that one? All set? Can I get a motion on D?
So, Mr. Chairman, you need to declare the vote?
Four to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And he did declare it.
The vote, and I so declare it. Motion on D, please.
I move that we vote to name the Betty Clark McClay, to name, not the, Betty Clark McClay is the reporter of the American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds for the town of Harwich.
Second.
Moved in second. And Joe, will you tell us all who Betty Clark McClay is?
So, thank you.
I know, but maybe the public does not.
Our new treasurer-collector graciously accepted the assignment that I foisted on her. This is an interim measure. As you know, our ARPA request for, to the, to the county's been accepted. It has to go through one level more of appro, of approval, but we must have the two roles. So as town administrator, I'm the recorder. That's the person who asks for it. And somebody in a finance role is preferred to then be the reporter of what we do with the funds. We have every expectation that once we have a finance director, town accountant on board, that person will replace Betty.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four to zero. All right, moving on. 2023 Annual Town Meeting Warrant Articles. Vote to place additional articles. Joe, you want to?
Don't we mean 2024? It's for fiscal 2024. It's the year 2023.
It is the 2023 Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
Okay.
The budget's 2024.
Correct.
Joe, you want to open this one?
Yeah, so right now, there are, there are two additional articles to be considered for placement tonight. Before you get into your recommendations, I do want to remind you that there are more that will come next week. They're not of a significant nature, but one of them, Mr. Chairman, as you know, if we are going to dispose of 276 Queen Anne Road, and I'll leave it to others to describe that property.
276.
There you go. So that article will be coming forward next week as well. But what you have tonight is a request for supplemental funding for Brooks Academy renovations and an article that the assessing department brought to my attention last week. You may see this from years before, and it's meant to be renewed every two years. So I, those are two articles to be placed. I did ask David Spitz, Chair of the Brooks Academy Museum Commission, to be able to come and speak to you about the first article, but I can certainly speak to part of it on behalf of David as well. However you'd like to proceed, Mr. Chairman.
Why don't you give us a quick overview, and then we'll call on David for any questions.
So this article is seeking additional funds, and we do have a dedicated funding source for it, for additional funding for the current project, and that is the foundation project at Brooks Academy Museum. What we discovered through the, through the act of doing the foundation project is there were several conditions that, under the procurement laws, are referred to as concealed conditions, meaning things that the town and other agents would not be aware of until you expose certain areas. And so these concealed conditions and that term is purposeful and helpful for the town. It does not impact upon the Attorney General standard for, I just wrote a blank on it. Give me a second. It'll come back to me. Do you know the word I'm searching for? Yeah, coffee, not water. Amendments to the contract. So that 10% rule under the construction standards does not apply when it is determined to be a concealed condition. So that's point number one. So why do we need the funding? Because we're in the middle of the foundation project. Conditions that were not anticipated by any agents appeared, and they need to be addressed. For me, more importantly, the funding source for this comes from our sinking fund. As you know, when the town sold properties, whenever you sell municipal properties, the first thing you must use the proceeds of the fund for is to pay off any outstanding debt. Well, as you would imagine, Five Bell's Neck Road and 203 Bank Street were so old, there's no resultant outstanding debt. So then the town may use that based on an appropriation for other buildings. And so we have a dollar amount in there that I'm reluctant to put out there because I don't want anyone to think that that's the full amount that we're going to spend. And in fact, David is already aware. My overall recommendation would be that you certainly place this article, you affirm the estimated cost once we get it, and that you rely upon the funding source that I have. But I am recommending that we remove the $600,000 in the capital outlay plan for Brooks Academy Museum because the funding source that I'm mentioning can come to bear on it, not what was fully anticipated, but certainly cover the costs that David can speak to now.
Okay. You want to give us an estimated, in your mind, an estimated cost that you're reluctant to give so that the public has some idea of what we're talking about?
Sure. No, the cost is not what I'm reluctant. I'm reluctant to tell how much money is in the fund because I wouldn't want any present speakers or anyone else to think that that's readily available. So we're looking in the range of $250,000 to $300,000. But again, David has to go through his work with the contractors and come up with a suitable estimate.
Thank you. We've identified you a half dozen times. Would identify yourself for the record?
David Spitz, Chair of the Brooks Academy Museum Commission. Well, we had a good January. And what we found in February, actually in January, we did have a concealed condition. Underneath the ramp that goes into the building, there's an old concrete ramp that was fully formed, fully able to get somebody up other than current accessible standards. And that cost us just under $9,000 to blast out that concrete and so forth. That was definitely a concealed condition. Maybe somebody with a long enough memory in town would have known that concrete ramp was there, but we didn't identify it. That's small potatoes. There's two other concealed items that we're aware of. One probably could have been predicted. There's a whole bunch of rotted seal. And that was all uncovered during the course of construction to the tune of an estimated $25,000. The big item is that after all of the excavation, or pretty much all of it had taken place, we realized that the con- okay, there's two older sections of the building. The newest section of the building, which has a complete basement, was built with a concrete block wall in the early 1900s. And apparently, we found out that the concrete block wall had no footings underneath it. Apparently, at the time, they considered that lying it on sand was sufficient. The structural engineer is telling us now that wouldn't be any code that is currently in place, and it is not an acceptable situation. So we proceeded to get a cost to take down the entire concrete block wall, the shared wall, that would be the east of the four walls in that third section of the building, and to do a poured concrete. That's the best solution on behalf of the town. What's under the other concrete block walls that were built in the early 1900s? I couldn't say, but we haven't touched them in any way, and we're not intending to. The shocker came when we put that out. This would be an extra, which means it's a little harder to control the cost that the contractor gives you. He came in with a cost of just over $200,000 to take out that concrete block wall and to pour a new concrete block wall. The OPM, the project structural engineer and the architect all basically couldn't believe that number. They started to negotiate, looking at unit prices and so forth. That probably would have taken several weeks to sort out and probably would have stopped the project as is until that all got worked out. The structural engineer who wanted us to do the new con, poured concrete wall as the strongest solution said, well, there are other alternatives. He was not going to present us those alternatives, but after seeing that price tag, he said, yeah, you can consider other things. And I'm, I'm getting out of my element here very quickly, but I will tell you, the first one thing he suggested was a situation where you inject the sand with the existing sand, making it more solid. I forget, I'm losing the word, Joe, maybe you can help me out. I'm, I'm losing the word as to what type of a block that would have created. But he would have had to go over that with a geotechnical engineer, and that got pushed to the side, not out, because what we're now pursuing is something called helical piers, which I don't know anything about, but at least one of you apparently does. And, well, if you look online as to what they are, then it should be able to be done a whole lot cheaper. By the time the contractor finally gives us a price on it, I'm not sure. The structural engineer has already prepared all the information. It has been written up as a bulletin, which is what you call when you're going out for an extra. And that has been going out. It is specialty construction. This contractor that we're using, Campbell Construction, has not worked with this procedure before. But after pushing both the contractor and the structural engineer, who knows the helical contractor pretty well, we finally got a meeting arranged to take place this Wednesday. And I'm hoping after Wednesday, and whether it's two days or two weeks, I can't say, but after that, I'm hoping that our $200,000 number is cut in half, or perhaps even better.
Thank you, David.
I have a history of underestimated costs, so I wouldn't rely on that if I were you. But that's what we're waiting for.
Thank you. Is the board comfortable with making a motion to place this on the warrant with an estimated cost and then revisit it next week?
Yeah, I am.
Don?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved in second to place this on the warrant with an estimated cost of $250,000? Joe?
I think it's prudent to start at that number.
Okay. That's good with the motion in the second?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion?
I hate change orders.
Anyone in the audience with any discussion?
I don't like it either.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four to zero. Thank you, David. Look forward to more information.
And then, Mr. Chairman, if I could, the other article again was the reaffirm and extend Mass General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 56. And you can see in the text there, provided by the Board of Assessors, this is a standard article that we renew every two years because it seeks to prevail upon the Commonwealth to allow us to do it.
And what is it that they're prevailing on us to allow us to do so the public understands what we're talking about?
Sure. What they're looking for is, upon acceptance of this section by the town, the Board of Assessors may grant real and personal property tax abatement up to 100% of the total tax assessed to members of the Massachusetts National Guard and to reservists on active duty in foreign countries for the fiscal year they perform such service, subject to eligibility criteria to be established by the Board of Assessors.
Don?
I move that we place an article with the paragraph that Joe just said, the pithy paragraph, onto the art, onto the warrant.
The title known as reaffirm and extend?
That wasn't what you said, but it sounds good to me.
Reaffirm and extend MGL, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 56. That's what the motion was.
That's what I thought I said.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four to zero. Can I get a motion to support while we're at it?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so we now have a motion to support the reaffirm and extend MGL, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 56 article. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four, zero.
Thank you.
Joe alluded to one that will come next week, and it's related to the, probably on Queen Anne Road, formerly known as the Pet something, whatever. But we have gone through the entire pro, process on that, except get, we've put it out for surplus property. We've done everything except for get town meeting approval to sell.
Okay.
And, Don, we have discussed this on multiple occasions.
Done a couple times before, and we've made more tax money.
Right. So this would be to ask town meeting to allow us to dispose of that property.
Good.
What else, Joe?
So then you have under E2, vote to support and recommend.
Yep.
Articles that have been placed. So just a reminder, in years past, there was always to accept the article and adopt the article. I think earlier, you voted to adopt an article. So whatever language we settle on, I would inform the finance committee so there's similarity in the recommendations.
Everyone we did last week, we voted to support. So we voted to place my warrant, and then last week, we did not vote adopt. We voted to support.
I thought you just voted to place.
Yeah, I thought we did too.
We voted to support a few of them, didn't we? Quite a few of them. I'll go right down the whole list again, but.
Is it possible to create an overarching motion that says that we support all of the articles that we here, here for, placed on the warrant?
No, because we might not have the same votes. Do you want to go from the top down?
Yes, so I'm referring to the document known as Articles Placed on the 2023 Warrant Regarding, Warrant Needing Board of Selectmen Recommendations. Yes, so I'm referring to the document known as Articles Placed on the 2023 Warrant Regarding, Warrant Needing Board of Selectment Recommendations. It's an eight-page document. Page one starts with Town Officers and Committees.
Move to support.
I was just going to ask, is that what we're supposed to do, move to support? Is that the right language? Well, I know we've placed, but what about adopt?
So, in years past, your practice that I've been a part of is to place, and then accept and adopt.
We'll do it however you want to do it. Support gets to the same thing.
Okay, if it doesn't matter, support's easier to say.
Doesn't it get to the same thing?
Yep.
Go ahead, Joe.
I get very nervous when you mess with past practice and what the moderator and other folks are used to.
In the past, Joe's right, your voice is...
Make a motion to place.
All right, I move that we accept and adopt.
Town Officers and Committees.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next would be Reports of Town Officers and Committees.
I move that we accept and adopt the article as read.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next would be Elected Officials' Salaries and the Amount of $119,107.
I move that we accept and adopt the article as read.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next would be Town Operating Budget, the amount of 43 million, estimated amount of 43,101,586 dollars.
I move that we accept and adopt the article as read.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next would be Monomoy Regional School District Budget and the Estimated Cost of $28,469,466. Joe, are they coming back before us to discuss what changes they've made? I know we got an email related to what they did with Finance Committee, but do they plan on coming back and answering our questions?
I think they would respond to any invitation and do the same.
Can we invite them next week? Does the board want to hold that one until they come back?
No, because estimated cost, and so...
Okay.
That gives us a chance to move ahead.
Only question I have is if we don't. If the vote change is based on lack of action.
Action, okay.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I think you've just ceded your leverage. If you say you've already approved that amount, that there's nothing to discuss.
Okay, I want to bring that one back. Cape Cod Regional Technical School District Budget and the Estimated Amount of $2,142,000.
Move that we accept and adopt the article as read.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four to zero. Water Department Budget and the Estimated Amount of $4,552,834.
Move that we accept and adopt the article as read. I believe you already did that earlier.
We did that when they were before us tonight.
We really mean it.
Waste water budget, done. Okay, next one, Cape Cod Community Media Center and the Estimated Cost of $157,037.
Move that we accept and adopt the article as read.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anyone, the public, that wants to jump in on any of these, just yell out loud. Items funded from the Cable Fund and the Estimated Amount of $47,222.
Move that we accept the article as, accept and adopt the article as read.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four to zero. Next would be the Child Care Stipend Support Program with an Estimated Cost of $250,000, with the note that we still are working on the language.
Move that we accept and adopt the article as read.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four to zero. Next is Fund Technology Enhancements for Brooks Free Library with an Estimated Cost of $25,000.
Move that we accept and adopt the article as read.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four to zero. Next, Amend Cemetery Regulations.
Are they approved by Dana?
They are.
Move that we accept and adopt the article as read. It's an inside joke, man.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four to zero. Don, didn't you have a question on the cemetery regulations, on who actually approved those last week, or no?
I think it was Dana.
I did. I raised that question because, no, not who approved them, who brought them to the town warrant, you know? By selecting, when we do it, in the past, the petitioner's been the cemetery board.
I thought it is.
We still have to approve it, we still have to adopt it.
But by the request of...
Cemetery Commission.
We still have to accept and adopt, I was just...
Yeah, changing the language. Just giving Joe another note. Accept MGL, Chapter 41, Section 110A.
Move that we accept and adopt the article as read.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four to zero. Amendment to the Agreement between the Towns of Chatham and Harwich with respect to the formation of a Regional School District.
Move that we accept and adopt the article as read.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Just, Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Go ahead.
I met with Legal Counsel John Giorgio last week, and requested through, for him, to the Superintendent, that our counsel be allowed to work with the School District Counsel. The title may change, but the overall effort is still the same. The language within that article was written by our counsel.
Thank you. Don, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to be sure here, they're good with that too, because we have to pass the same article as Chatham.
So, what counsel had indicated is, what you have to pass substantially is the same document provided by the School Committee. We don't have that yet, but that's what the School District's providing. The language in the article, if it's substantially the same, is acceptable. The thing that our counsel's looking for is the date that the School Committee actually voted it. Because he's indicated that what you're agreeing is what the district changed.
That's all I have.
That's good, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four to zero. Next would be Promote the Town of Harwich with an Estimated Cost of $50,000. This would be the Chamber of Commerce traditional article.
Move that we accept and adopt the article as read.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? The only discussion, because it hasn't been pointed out, is the recommendation is to go from 35,000 to 50,000, which I see is very warranted, given the amount of work that the Chamber of Commerce does for the town of Harwich. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would add to that. It's not just the amount of work. If you look back over a 10-year period and what has been happening at the Chamber with their vast staff, this is really remarkable, and we shouldn't pause on this. When I moved into this town, you could lie in the middle of Route 28, and you wouldn't get run over for a couple of days in February. So, things are really robust down there in the rest of town, and we need to support the movement on that.
I think what we're hearing is, great job, Cindy.
Tell your staff.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four to zero, and now a few words from our Chamber Director.
Thank you, Cindy Williams, Executive Director of the Chamber of Commerce in Harwich. And I just want to thank you all very much for the support. We love what we do, so we'll continue to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, Supplemental Annual Allocation of Mass Cultural Council for Local Cultural Council Grants and the Amount of 4,000, Estimated Cost of $4,000.
I move that we accept and adopt the article as read.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four to zero. Next, Defray the Expenses of the Chase Library and Harwich Port Library, the Estimated Cost of $20,000.
Move that we accept and adopt the article as read.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That also has been historically something that's been discussed. And for anybody who's not familiar with it, it's, they're not just libraries, they're part of the history of the town also. That's the way books used to be dispensed.
Thank you, Don. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four to zero. Next, Annual Departmental Revolving Funds Authorization, and there is a table in the warrant.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, there was considerable discussion last week. First, I want to draw your attention to the correction of the Scrivener's error. In the body of the article, it refers to pursuant to Section 8.2. 8.2 of our bylaw, Chapter 8, Section 8.2, requires a spending limit to be set, and it has to be set in an article placed by the Board at town meeting. Point number two, I did change, for discussion purposes, the dollar amount related to 204 Sisson Road Municipal Building, and increased it from 250,000 to 300,000. And that was because, as you see, in years past, we've been bringing in in excess of $300,000, but prevented from using that or hitting that mark. And so, it just carries over and builds on itself. So, this is an effort really to reflect what has legitimately been funds that are brought in.
Thank you, Joe. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
It wasn't a motion. A little premature.
That's right, you didn't make it.
She's going to make it.
I believe that we vote to accept and adopt the annual departmental revolving funds authorization.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Three, one.
For reasons previously discussed.
Herring Fisheries traditional article.
I move that we accept and adopt the article as read.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four to zero. Community Preservation...
Mr. Chairman, if I could, starting at that article that you just started to read on page four, continuing on through the top half, or actually the majority of page six. So, pages four, five, and six are the CPA articles. I will tell you that counsel met remotely with the, I believe she's the clerk of the Community Preservation Committee, to confirm that the funding sources are reflected accurately. I believe there's going to be language changes to properly state the funding sources, but they are essentially as what you see in the articles. So, there will be language change, the dollar amounts don't change, and it's meant to tie back, as was said earlier, to the buckets so-called that you see in the second article on this page.
Thank you.
None of which impacts upon this first article, but I wanted to get it out there.
Community Preservation Act Land Bank Debt Service and the Amount of $166,650 Estimated Cost.
I move that we accept and adopt the article as read.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Joe, do you recall, excuse me, Mike?
Go ahead.
That debt payment, is it in next year?
I believe this is the final debt payment.
This is the final year of the issue.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four to zero. Community Preservation Act Appropriations and Housekeeping Expenses. Anticipated Amount of $1,390,900.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I could, you'll notice with this one, there's actually not an estimated cost. And what you're looking at is four buckets plus an undesignated fund. So, each of those lines stands on its own.
Sweepbacks?
What's that?
There were sweepbacks?
I don't know that there were sweepbacks. I think these were just the funds certified as available through accounting.
This is taking the total funds and using the 10% values we need for each of the...
Correct. But it's not a running total.
Required because of the, we have to devote 10% to recreation, 10% to housing.
So, you didn't mention a number, so...
So, disregard the last number, and it's Open Space Reserve, $198,700. Historic Preservation Reserve, $198,700. Community Housing Reserve, $198,700. Administrative Expense, $50,000. And Undesignated Fund, Anticipated, $1,390,900.
Move that we accept and adopt the article as read.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four to zero. Community Preservation Act Herring River Land Preservation Project. Estimated Cost of $125,000.
Move that we accept and adopt the article as read.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four to zero. Community Preservation, I think I'm going to bring that one back next week unless we want to vote on that now. Community Preservation Act Lower Cape Housing Institute. Estimated Cost of $7,500.
I move that we vote to adopt and...
Accept and adopt.
Accept and adopt Community Preservation Act Lower Cape Housing Institute.
As read.
As read.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Don?
Yeah, the only point I'm going to make is, they have in the CPC brought up what I consider to be a fairly legitimate discussion. It's like, how many new people are coming to these institutes? HAC does some, CPC, the Community Development Partnership does some. And every town is being requested to do this, so essentially, I mean, in my mind, it looks like they're adding a staff person, but they're not putting an entire staff person's effort to doing this thing. It's, we're not the only place. Every town, from Provincetown to us, is kicking in some amount of money. So, I'd like to get that explanation before I would wholeheartedly approve it. Because presumably, when you're doing these housing institutes, you're capturing different people who want to know what's going on and bringing them in. They have asked, when I was liaison of the CPC, it's like, how many people, other than the ones you've already talked to, are going to be benefiting from this? And that was not an answer that was readily available.
Okay. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
I'm going to abstain.
Three, zero, one. Community Preservation Act Brooks Academy Renovations. Joe, you wanted to put this on the side?
So, no, I want to be clear that the Community Preservation Fund request is not touched by anything. This was regularly expected. It ties back to historic preservation, so it puts it to a standard that I think is appropriate. When you get to the free cash article under capital, I'd be recommending a lower number.
Thank you. Community Preservation Act Brooks Academy Renovations, Estimated Cost, $690,000.
Move that we accept and adopt the article as read.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four to zero. Community Preservation Act Preservation of 203 Bank Street, the old fire station, and Estimated Cost of $350,000.
Move that we accept and adopt the article as written.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Community Preservation, four to zero, Joe.
Thank you.
Community Preservation Act Oak Street Bike Path Crossing Lights and the Estimated Cost of $13,000.
Hope they work. Move that we accept and adopt the article as written.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four to zero. Community Preservation Act Senior Softball Fields Restrooms, Estimated Cost of $150,000.
We accept and adopt the article as written.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four to zero. Community Preservation Act Resurfaced Courts at Brooks Park, Estimated Cost, $110,000.
We'll be accepting and adopting the article as written.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four to zero. Community Preservation Act Additional Funding Sand Pond Restroom Project, Estimated Cost, $35,000.
Move that we accept and adopt the article as written.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Community Preservation Act Skinacuit Pond Remediation Project and the Amount of $92,000, Estimated $92,000.
We'll be accepting and adopting the article as written.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four to zero. Community Preservation Act War Memorials Project, Estimated Cost, $256,282.40.
We'll be accepting and adopting the article as written.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
It's remarkable how to the penny we can get to.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four to zero. Capital Outlay Plan Items Funded from Free Cash.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I could, if you look at the table on page seven, and I'm going to give a heads up, if anybody has a calculator, I'll be looking for help. So, project number 15, 80 Parallel Street, also known as Brooks Academy, $600,000. Department was Facilities Maintenance. I would recommend that that project be stricken from the table and that the table be renumbered.
Four million, eight hundred, thousand, four hundred and eighty-six. I don't have my calculator, but I can do it.
So that would give us a new number of four million, eight eighty-six, one, five, one.
Yeah, that's right.
Yep.
Uh, I'm gonna list these as part of the motion.
Before, before you do-
Go ahead.
Ju- just so I can be certain about where we're at here, it's, we still have the same, same understanding that there's a prospect if somebody wanted to pull out something from that grid, that was a potential discussion that could be heard on town meeting floor?
Yes, so actually in speaking with our council, who is reaching out to the moderator, our council also indicated that rather than divide the question, he would expect that moderator Ford would read the table and ask that if anybody wants a project to be held, that would be held out. There would then be votes on all the ones that weren't held, then go back to the one that was held out. What would still be in play would be the final dollar amount.
I'd be willing to make that motion when you get done with it.
Okay.
Um, back-
Go ahead.
Back to, um, why is Brooks Academy coming out of here?
So, um-
Because CPCs?
Well, uh, no, because of the, um, additional work, um, for the foundation repairs. Um, the prospect occurs to me that we'd be looking at one point six million dollars, uh, in one town meeting for Brooks Academy, and, um, that far exceeds the foundation project. And so in analyzing and talking with David Spitz, the, uh, Community Preservation Article was talking about repairs that may be necessary to the interior walls when the foundation project is done. So now we're looking at a project that could be done within the fiscal year, meaning the next fiscal year, and we have another, uh, s- uh, funding source in the sinking fund that we could rely upon. So between the foundation work and then what may be needed for the interior walls, um, I think that was a high placeholder number. And I think, um, to ensure success for both the new article and the CPC article, I think it's prudent to take this money out.
Cause this was for different work.
Correct.
So we just wouldn't get to this work and they should-
Or we could rely upon other funding sources already available for a much lower number.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
All right. Next is Capital Outlay Plan Items Funded From Free Cash, estimated amount of four million, eight hundred and eighty-six dollars.
You said you were gonna read the grid.
You want me to?
I don't need you to. I'm gonna, I'd be willing to make a motion.
I was gonna make a little note at the end of it that it's fifteen projects, sixteen projects.
I don't think you need to read it.
I'm, I'm willing to move that we accept it and top the article as, uh, written rather than-
Written and presented.
Right.
Rather than presented.
In the estimated amount of four hun- four million, eight hundred and eighty-six dollars, eighty-six thousand, one hundred and fifty-one dollars.
Second.
Okay. And then just to note that is sixteen projects, they are listed in the, uh, in the warrant. And Joe, we discussed last week, before we go to a vote, uh, we discussed last week adding a description line to the table for a brief description of what it is. Uh, are we still on board with that?
I, I am. Um, as I would've said under the, uh, previous discussion, um, on the, um, on the budget, we do need to be mindful that whatever language you put in there cements it. And so I don't wanna give specificity to a level that's never been given before. So for example, we could talk, uh, in the next column, the, the various uses that would be, that would be used for. Um, what I don't wanna do, and let me use an example, say project number thirteen, two oh four Sisson Road. Um, if I'm expected to give an itemized, uh, number for everything, that's not how we built the capital plan, and that's not the intent of this. There are various things related to mechanical systems and related to the auditorium, um, that I can break out, but I am concerned about getting down to that granular level of line item reductions. And so I have no objection whatsoever to enhancing the table by adding an, um, um, a column with a brief description. I also have no problem adding explanations. Um, if I could, just last but not least, as I've demonstrated with the table in appendix B, I've tried to demonstrate as your town administrator that I uphold the virtues of transparency and offer as much information as I can, um, without hamstringing the town.
Thank you, Joe. Don, anything on that?
Nope.
Larry?
No.
Mary?
All set.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, uh, four, zero.
Thank you.
Capital Outlay Plan Items Funded From Water Retained Earnings, estimated amount of seven hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Will we accept and adopt the article as written?
Second.
And actually, we did that already.
We did this already, though.
We do that?
Yes.
We voted on it.
Withdraw my motion.
The crew is here.
Oh, we did them separately, didn't we?
You, you beat, I, I move.
We can have two. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Joe, we did that one. The water department was here individually, but on articles.
So I already have those. So I have that for this capital item, and for the, uh, two coming up. Um, I do wanna, if I could, Mr. Chairman, under the next one, uh, chapter ninety, once you read it, I do wanna explain a question that was asked before.
Sure. Capital Outlay Plan Items Funded From Chapter Ninety Funds in the Amount of seven hundred thousand, estimated.
So a question was asked, if you go back to the free cash article.
We gotta make a motion on that?
I thought he was gonna explain it first. But I'll, uh, the move that we accept and adopt the article as written.
Second.
Discussion, Joe?
So, um, in years past, you remember that there were two tranches of funds. One of them was from a debt exclusion, the other was from chapter ninety. Um, made the administrative decision this year to have the first seven hundred thousand appear in the table under the free cash, so that's project number ten, and also then use chapter ninety funds. Uh, it didn't really make much sense to have an authorization out there. Uh, we have several articles of authorizations that are still sitting there without borrowing, so I think it's better to use the free cash that's available, but I just wanted to be clear that that's how that's happening. It's not duplicative. They're meant to be dovetailed together, and it gets the one, to the one point four million that the town generally, uh, allocates for road repairs.
Just not doing it as a debt exclusion.
Correct.
Don, anything? Joe, uh, Larry?
I'm fine.
Mary?
All set. We should probably explain that on the floor.
Yes. Uh, anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So the next one, we did West Tower, which was twenty-eight, both. East Tower, which we did, and that's it.
So then, Mr. Chairman, very quickly, um, again, you'll be getting, um, next week, uh, final version of the any zoning articles uh, to come back. There were the three that are in consideration. They're, um, pending review from council. Um, and then some of the general, all the ones I mentioned, like adopt the capital plan, um, and others that I've made reference to before. Uh, if anything comes out of the blue, I'll certainly send it to you ahead of time, and we'll have all the background material next week.
We will also have all the petition articles before us next week. They've all been invited to, uh, present. Uh, Joe, can we get to Don's point earlier? Can we get a matrix of what's been voted, um, so that we know what's been approved, what's on the warrant in, in one form?
Yes.
Please?
Yep.
Um, discussion on additional material to be included in the warrant. The only thing I had, Joe, I brought it to you last week, was the revolving fund reports. To make sure those were-
Uh, yes, thank you. Yep.
Supposed to go into the warrant, so, uh, anything else? Larry?
No.
Don?
Um, one of the things I thought after last year is an explanation somewhere about CPC. There were a lot of questions about, you know, why can't we use this here and there? But just an explanation of where that money comes from and how it's dictated into those four buckets. Um, it might've, I don't know, people don't always read that stuff, but at least, uh, it'd be an attempt to stop some of that discussion.
Um, I, I would agree with that, and if I could, Mr. Chairman, the, the purpose of this, uh, agenda item was exactly that. Um, I know you folks know, but I think it's worth repeating, um, for anyone watching. The, the warrant at a town meeting is the sole creation of the Board of Selectmen. And so what you have within that is, um, and the sole purview of the board, it's your warrant that you create. Um, we have several pages that talk about, um, standard terms, uh, financial philosophy, things like that. So a primer on CPC, and that's something I would work through Dave Nixon on, but that might be helpful where we can refer folks uh, to the front of the warrant, say, rather than an appendix. So you can add more content to the front before you get to what I've always called the, um, well, it's the legal notice, the whereas's and the therefor's. That begins the legal warrant, and then the appendices usually tie back to an article. So a general topic like this, I think would fit nicely in the beginning of the book, but the point again bear out is, it's your warrant, so if there's anything else you think that should be added, please let me know.
Thank you. Anything on that?
No, I'm fine.
On the petition articles, uh, there was one other article contemplated by the board on the chapter ninety-seven land related to the Main Street bog. And, um, the petitioner, there's a petition article, and we considered one.
Yeah.
Council has recommended that we go with the petitioner's article. Um, council is still working on my thought that it's been agricultural for twenty-two years, and we don't need a special act to get to where we're going. Um, he is doing deed research, cause not all that land was bought with land bank money. So, um, we need a better diagram. They are working on it, but he believes, John Giorgio believes that we'll get to the same place with Leo Cocunis's article, and we don't need our own.
Okay.
So if that's okay with the board, we will not have that one in there.
We have to resolve this.
Yes.
I mean, where it's going is where it should be going.
Agreed.
Two attorneys are meeting with me and the superintendent later this week.
And I did ask Joe today of Danielle, and I, I believe she sent it to you, um, petition articles, if we can get the legal opinions before next meeting, so that the board has them on what is legal and what is not.
Yes, so what we sent to council, what we asked the petitioners if they agreed to, cause they're under no obligation, is that they could provide us with a word document, uh, cause we still have to recreate verbatim what they wrote. And so as we got those, we sent them straight over to council.
Okay.
So we should have that for next week for sure.
We will have their, our, our council's opinion. I know they have to go on the warrant, but the board before they vote support should know what's legal and what's not.
Well, just to, to comment on that, my assumption also is that the legal council finds something that, that would help the petitioner get to their endpoint. That would go back to the petitioner, I assume, as well.
I don't believe that's the practice of KP law, and it tends to run contrary to what the Secretary of State warns municipalities that we should not be interfering either under the guise of aid or amendment. Um, I think what, what may happen is a motion might be able to impact upon that, or council then may say, why don't we help you with a corrective article, uh, going forward?
Yeah, I would, I would hope there's some, uh, leeway on that, because my point was, we, we had one example where we had a petition article that if it passed, didn't get to where they want it to go. And so we have that information, then we should apprise them that. I guess they could turn us down, but, uh, they should be aware that they're not, they're not, if they passed it, would not reach their, meet their objective.
Okay. You got that? Joe?
I'll talk to council about that.
Thank you. I'd take a motion on F, and I would do, uh, take one through six as one motion.
I, I move that we vote to accept, uh, the liquor license renewals, uh, pending your twenty-twenty-three fire inspection reports of AJG Corporation DBA Weather Deck Restaurant, one sixty-eight Route twenty-eight. Two, five fifty-four Street Bar LLC DBA, uh, Three Monkeys at five fifty-four Route twenty-eight. Mount Group LLC doing businesses Mad Minnow Bar and Kitchen at five fifty-four Route twenty-eight. Belmont Condominium Beach Club Corporation doing businesses Beach One, Beach, uh, One Belmont Road. Uh, five, Lucky Labrador Incorporated doing perks, uh, doing business as perks, five forty-five Route twenty-eight. And six, the Witchmere Harbor, uh, Functions LP doing businesses Witchmere Harbor Beach and Tennis Club at twenty-three Snow In Road.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion on G, please.
Mr. Chair, I move that we vote to approve a twenty-twenty-three seasonal off-premise, uh, liquor license renewal for Malik, uh, Corporation doing business as Value Mart at four thirty-five Route twenty-eight.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four, zero.
Uh, Don, I'll do the next two just to give you a break.
H.
Okay. H, uh, approve the change of mandatory application for Allen Harbor Yacht Club, uh, known as Allen Harbor Yacht Club, three seventy-one Lower County Road.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm only letting him do this if he can say vitlers.
Four, four, zero, and I would take I, one through nine.
I, one through nine, uh, thank you, Don. Approve the following twenty-twenty-three, uh, seasonal compliment victors license renewals. Uh, number one is AJG Corp., known as the Weather Deck Restaurant, one sixty-eight Route twenty-eight. Second one is Icewood Food Services, known as Jakes at Cranberry Valley at one eighty-three Oak Street. Third is five fifty-four Street Bar LLC, known as Three Monkeys, five fifty-four Route twenty-eight. Four is Harvish Port Dairy Queen at four forty-one Route twenty-eight. Five is the Lucky Labrador, known as Perks at five fifty-four Route twenty-eight. Six is Mount Group, uh, LLC, known as Mad Minnows, Minnow Kitchen and Bar at five fifty-four Route twenty-eight. Seven is Palmon at Earl, uh, and it's at thirty Earl Road. Number eight is Port Restaurant and Bar, known as the Port, at five fifty, five forty-one Route twenty-eight. And nine is Witchmere Harbor, known as Witchmere Beach Club at twenty-three Snow In Road.
Second.
Okay, moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I've helped, Don.
I'm just, I'm just coughing in sympathy for Mary.
Four, zero, J.
I move, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the following weekday and Sunday, twenty-twenty-three seasonal amusement license renewals. One, Hall Karts Incorporated, nine Sisson Road amusement type go-karts. Two, Harbor Glen Mini Golf, one sixty-eight Route twenty-eight, amusement type mini golf.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, four, zero, K?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the twenty-twenty-three in holders license renewal for Palmon Earl at thirty Earl Road.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next is liquor licenses.
Ah, yes.
There is a memo, uh, that was put in front of all of us tonight. The memo outlines that anything highlighted is the same request as last year. Anything not highlighted is, uh, asking for a change. The first one is, uh, no change, and the third one is no change, middle one is a change.
With that, I'm, uh, going to move, Mr. Chair, that we vote to approve the Lucky Labrador Incorporated doing business as perks at five forty-five Route twenty-eight, and it's twenty-twenty-three request. You want me to read all of the particulars, or?
Uh, you may, yes, you should.
Okay. Weekday, twelve PM to twelve AM inside, and eleven thirty AM to ten, uh, PM outside. Jukebox, radio, television, dancing by patrons and live performers, live recorded music and amplification. Sunday, one PM to twelve AM inside, ambient music, television. Six PM to ten PM outside, jukebox, radio, television, live recorded music, amplification, dancing. Three PM to twelve AM inside, jukebox, radio, television, radio, live recorded music, amplification, and dancing.
Second.
Second.
Moved in second. Uh, to approve as read. Any discussion? Mary?
I'm surprised that we gave them amplification outside?
We did.
I know Danielle's note says that.
Yeah, we did. We debated, we debated it.
They were the small speakers. They're not like, they're not having like bands coming and setting up outside.
Okay, all right.
But we have to approve that for even a television set.
And just so that we're clear, they, they are allowed to have amplified bands outside, and they did this past summer, and they had no violations.
Okay.
So, but that, part of that motion is to approve-
As-
Live entertainment amplified.
And that's unchanged.
That is unchanged from last year.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You want me to go to three, and then we can go back to two and discuss it? Mr. Chair, I move that we vote to approve the Witchmere Harbor Functions LP doing business as Witchmere Beach Club, twenty-three Snow In Road, for their twenty-twenty-three request for weeka- weekdays at eleven AM to one AM inside, and eleven AM to ten PM outside, dancing by patrons and live performers, live recorded music, amplification. And Sunday, eleven AM to, uh, one AM inside, and eleven AM to ten PM outside, dancing by patrons and live performers, live recorded music and amplification.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Don?
Yeah, I just wanna point out to everybody, we, we did a field trip last year. Uh, where they wanna do this is, what, the third floor, basically. Uh, they, we're gonna do weddings. It's really well insulated, and I don't see that this is going to be a problem for anybody, because it's gonna hold within the confines, uh, their premises, and they're not near anybody.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four, zero. Don, page two of the memo is outlines what, uh, the port restaurant had last year, and above it is the request. Twenty-twenty-two is listed weekday and Sunday. The only difference, just to spell it out, that I see is they, they are, uh, they were given unamplified last year, uh, and I believe the year before, and this year, they are asking for amplified outside, both Sundays and weekdays. That's the change that they're requesting.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I can't make the motion for the request for this year, because their circumstances are still what their circumstances are. They are butt pretty closely to everybody, and I'm, I'm gonna hold firm that the outside portion of this is the way it should be. As a matter of fact, uh, I can point to last season as evidence that that's working.
Yep, and no found violations last year.
I agree with Don.
Let's get to a motion, and then we'll get to discussion.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I'd like to move that we approve the, uh, request by Port Restaurant and Bar, D B A, the Port, five forty-one Route twenty-eight, with the changes as follows for the twenty-twenty-two license weekdays. Eleven A M. to twelve A M. inside, recorded live music, amplification. Eleven A M. to ten P M. outside, television, background music only. Six P M. to ten P M. outside, live performed, unamplified. And Sunday, one P M. to twelve A M. inside, live recorded music, amplification. One P M. to ten P M. outside, television and background music only. Six P M. to ten P M. outside, live, unamplified music.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, I believe I heard a reference to two thousand twenty-two. Was the intent to mirror in twenty-three what was offered in twenty-two?
Based on the twenty-twenty-two approval.
Thank you.
Okay, any discussion? Mary?
Nope.
Larry?
No, I'm fine with that. Life measures of success. We had no complaints last year, so.
Don?
You and I have discussed this. I might point out that other towns are actually starting to adopt the mentality that we have to try to rope in, allow tourists to have a good time, allow businesses to make money, but we've got, we've gotta be able to control what we have, or else we won't have it anymore.
We were dangerously close to that.
Yep.
Mary?
So do we sign these documents?
No, we vote.
No, I mean, assuming we've voted differently than what they've asked.
Right, you would, staff, staff would provide new ones.
You would do new ones. Okay, thank you.
Good question.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, four zero. I'd look for a motion on M. And point out that that is a new ownership.
Okay, I was gonna ask that question, so. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the temporary closure of the W F S Restaurant Group, doing business as Red River Barbecue, located at seven eighty-seven Route twenty-eight.
Second.
Okay, moved in second. Any discussion? Don?
Yeah, the only question I have is normally we don't do these things on an open-ended basis. Do they have any idea of, like, are we approving it for a month, for three months, for two months?
It's my understanding that it's only for a couple weeks. They are, it's in transition. I don't have the exact answer, so I won't pretend to, but it is new ownership. They're doing a certain amount of work to bring themselves up to a comfort level in the facility, and then they plan on opening as soon as possible. Maybe our chamber director has more information?
Yes, she does. Actually, I spoke with him earlier today. I think they also gave a date of April fifth. They're going to try to get that reopened. We are going to be working with them to do a meet the new owner. Welcome to the area, and it'll be the second or third week in April. But he is planning and to open, be, be ready April fifth.
Don, go ahead, then Joe?
Not to put you in a position of agreeing to anything, but. It would make me feel more comfortable if we put a date like June first, and we could revisit that later. It's not to say that we wouldn't extend it, but there needs to be some sort of boundaries to it.
Joe?
I have no comment based on that. I would rather defer to that commentary.
Okay. Why don't we put May first, and then they can request?
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, I know that we're gonna do something the second or third week in April with them, so.
You're a harder man than I.
No later than May first, or they can request it again.
Okay, that's fine.
That was part of the motion and part of the second?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and welcome the new owners to town.
Look forward to going there.
Motion on N?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve a special permit request for a one-day entertainment. Harwich Conservation Trust on their event for May thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, from nine A M. to twelve P M. At ten Headwaters Drive, recorded live music and preampli, and amplification.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four zero.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve a special permit request for a one-day wine and malt liquor license for hair works for an event on April second, twenty twenty-three, from three P M. to seven P M. at one nineteen Route one thirty-seven.
Second.
Okay, moved in second. Any discussion? Cindy?
I'm back. This is actually their one-year anniversary, and we're doing a ribbon cutting. So please, on April second, it is a Sunday. I wanna say it's three to six or something like that. I would invite you all to please come and join them for their anniversary, but also ribbon cutting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For obvious reasons, I wasn't aware that the, the hair cutting place had changed hands.
So we will, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four zero. Next up is a new twenty-twenty-three seasonal entertainment license for Pelham on Earl, operating LLC, D B A Pelham on Earl. Selectman Kavanaugh could not be here tonight. She sent me an email today, and she shared her concern with the ten P M. inside and outside amplified music because of the geographic location and proximity to houses, as well as that was at the West Harwich Group, which we had a fair amount of problems when we opened the old Irish pub for the one season and the other place, and I can't.
Yeah, I have a feeling the same way.
Something tavern. So Selectman Kavanaugh has a problem with the ten, uh, ten P M. outside, and it wasn't a be-all, end-all for her, but she wanted it pointed out. Don? I'll start with Mary. She had a.
I had the same concern about the amplification, knowing that street, it's, um, it's really a very neighborhood area. I don't think there should be amplification outside.
Don?
It was the clatter. But having said that, it's three places then. I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna get into a hornet's nest here. Is there any chance of deferring the action on this, having Julie come back and invite the applicant in to have that discussion? Because I'm not real comfortable with it either. There's a history in the area.
Larry?
Let's have, let's have some more discussion on that.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, just, I'm a reminder that Member Kavanaugh is not available next week either.
I'd hate to hold this up. I'd rather see a motion with some restrictions on it, let them come back and ask for more. But, you know, some of this is inside, and if they have dates that they want to be open and have events, I would hate to hold them up. I would also hate to judge a new owner based on practices of others, because we have always given a pretty good latitude until we had complaints. So I don't want to pre-assume that we're gonna have any complaints, but amplified till ten in that neighborhood sounds like a tall ask.
I'd be willing to make a motion then for inside versus outside. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve a new twenty-twenty-three seasonal entertainment license for Pelham on Earl, operating LLC, as Pelham on Earl at thirty Earl Road. And this is what I'm offering, that for inside weekdays from nine A M. to ten P M. Jukebox, radio, television, dancing by patrons and live performers, live recorded music, amplification. Outside, nine A M. to ten P M., unamplified music. And two, for Sunday from nine A M. to ten P M. inside with the jukebox, radio, television, dancing by patrons, live performers, live recorded music and amplification. And Sunday from nine A M. to ten P M. outside with unamplified performances.
I'll second.
Okay, that's been moved in second, and essentially that's the same as we just approved for the port. Now it's specific to acoustic only on the outside, unamplified music.
And just for the record, Mr. Chairman, they indicate in their application they're looking for an April fifteenth start date, so I think this is helpful to them.
For those people who haven't been listening to this long argument for, over the past several years, I want to remind everybody that we have come to the understanding that each of these locations is unique as to where it is and who it affects. So there are some occasions we're approving amplified music, but the circumstances have warranted that, because we have either experienced with no problems at all, or it's unlikely to have problems, because they're in a fairly isolated area where there's other commercial entities that are buffering anybody that could possibly be hearing it. But the ones that are right next to residential areas, we have taken a consistent stand that we're trying to balance their right to operate against the people's right to peace and quiet.
Thank you, Don. Larry, anything?
No, I, I agree. I would, I would argue, new owners, it's to their benefit to get on well with their neighbors to start off with, and then we can, we can force something else we want.
Mary, anything further?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, four zero, and, and Joe, maybe we have our licensing agent just speak to them if they want to come back before us and pitch the case for amplified. They, they are welcome to do so.
Will do.
And we can change that anytime we want. Old business, discussion on charter change recommendations. I only put this back on, because it's a, been a placeholder and knows something would come up. My suggestion to the Board is that you let me take it off until we have a new Board after the elections and bring it back then. I'm not talking about it again until, I don't think we're gonna create any more warrant articles.
That would be merciful.
This year, so. If it pleases this Board, I'd like to bring it back to the next Board.
So moved.
Okay.
I don't think we need to vote.
Joe, that's just a note to Danielle, that we'll move that placeholder out. Town administrators' report?
Very quickly, first, I'm thrilled to announce a promotion. I have promoted Dean Damon at our golf course operation to the position of foreman. And so Dean replaces Rain Rider, who had served ably for several decades. Dean is in the crew, and it comes with the high recommendation of Sean Fernandez, so I've made that appointment. And that is in your packet, or that's in my packet. And then secondly, equally important, I'd be remiss if I did not at least mention the great work of Police Deputy Chief Kevin Considine and everybody related to the law enforcement torch run, and all of the brave souls. And I think Mark may have left to go warm up, including Finance Committee Member Mark Kelleher at the annual polar plunge this past Saturday. Great work, hardy souls, and most importantly, they raised a record eight hundred fifty thousand dollars all year by the torch runs, and this was the last of the torch run, excuse me, of the polar plunges, so great job by everybody.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mary?
Nothing.
Don?
Nope.
Larry?
Well, you always hate to brag about your own intelligence, but I was smart enough not to get in the water. Very much support what they, what they did. Tremendous, it was lawful and tremendous effort.
I, I would agree with you, and I did not get in the water either.
Gives me goosebumps just thinking about it.
You know, I would, the only comment I have, and I, and I shared it all with the Board, but the public has been asking for the last year what the disposition of the, all of the articles that were written in the Chronicle related to the Board and the lawsuits with the port and the Ember. I'm pleased to announce, and you all know, all three lawsuits have been dismissed, and, and the Board found not responsible, and the others named. And then this past week, we got a letter from A B C C, the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission, that they upheld our three-day suspension of the port restaurant for violations after that chaotic hearing that we all sat through. I would like to send that to the paper, if they would be willing to write at least. And certainly the owners of the establishment and their attorneys have the right to appeal. On the A B C C, they will not be appealing us. They will be in Superior Court with A B C C if they want to appeal that. The other lawsuits, they may choose to appeal or not appeal. I'm, I'm hopeful that we can all move on from this at, at some point, and all get along, I guess. That's really all I have to say. Don?
Yeah, I'd just like to tag on one thing to what you were just saying. Larry drew the brunt of all of that, and I think we should recognize that he did a great job in really trying circumstances.
Sure did. Motion to adjourn?
Thank you, Don.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are.